Okay, uh, it is six thirty, so I want to call to order the December tenth meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board. Uh, first item on our agenda is meeting minutes from November twentieth.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain. And next we have the main minutes of November twenty-sixth.
Oh, that was twentieth, I'm sorry. I would vote yes for that one.
Twenty-sixth.
I was looking at the twenty-sixth.
I will abstain for the twenty-sixth as well.
Oops. Sorry, I voted yes for that. It's twenty-sixth that I gotta take a bath on. Make a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-sixth.
I'll second it.
Again, any discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
No, abstain.
Okay.
Item two.
Item two.
I'd like to introduce to the board, she's on Zoom right now. This is Katie from Massachusetts DCR. Her and I have been in communication over the past couple of months because FEMA is updating their flood insurance rate maps. And in the process of doing so, Katie and I consulted and realized that the Town of Rutland does not have any memorialization of those flood maps anywhere in our zoning bylaws.
Because everything flows downhill, we're at the top of the hill.
And so, so even though the town accepted the maps in nineteen eighty-four and they've been updated since, it is important for the town to have something in our bylaws to retain eligibility for homeowners just in case they need, they qualify for flood insurance through the state program. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie to summarize what needs to be done and what we'll be working on between now and the May two thousand twenty-five town meeting.
Hi, everybody, can you all hear me, is my audio okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, nice to meet you all. My name's Katie Pate from DCR's Flood Hazard Management Program. We are the State Coordinating Office of the National Flood Insurance Program in Massachusetts. So as the introduction was given wonderfully by John, so Rutland is a member of the National, or participating member of the National Flood Insurance Program. The community did join the program back in nineteen eighty-four, so it's been several, several decades that you've been a part of this program. So all communities that participate in this program are required to adopt and enforce certain minimum regulations as part of the program. In Massachusetts, those are typically found in three places. They're found in state building code, Wetlands Protection Act, and then also in local flood plan regulation. Now, Rutland is part of the Nashua River watershed. You're one of the communities having new flood insurance rate maps going effective, fingers crossed, next summer according to FEMA's current timeline. And so with that, the community needs to have a compliant bylaw by that effective date. And in coordinating with John, it appears Rutland does not have, or at least he couldn't find, a flood plan bylaw in effect. So with that, the community will need to adopt it in order to remain in good standing with the program by that effective date. We do have a state model bylaw that can be used if desired. It includes all the provisions that are required. It has been already approved by FEMA Region One. Region One's that New England branch of FEMA. It's also already been approved by the AGO's office. But those are the minimum requirements the community must adopt and have in place before those maps go effective next summer.
So Katie, this is, this is pretty standard language that pretty much goes into every community's bylaw. It's just the details may change a little bit depending on the panel numbers that are present in that town?
Absolutely. All three hundred and fifty-one participating communities in Massachusetts have this model bylaw language, whether you're right on Cape Cod, whether you're way out in the Berkshires, or you're in Rutland in Worcester County, all have the same exact language. Again, those map panels, just as John said, those change because obviously where you're located. And then some communities have adopted higher standards than what the minimum requirements are, so that might be different. That's not a requirement, again, that's an optional thing that some communities do choose to do. But I guess it's the same language and that model that's used throughout the state.
Any questions?
Did John give you a chance to read some of that?
No, I haven't had a chance to read it in detail yet. The plan is after, to have Katie come in, introduce herself, and kind of explain the process and why we're doing this. And then the plan was, after the new year, with the bylaw subcommittee, to start working on bylaws to go into our zoning bylaws based on the state model language and just create a new section in our zoning bylaws and add this in. That would probably be the simplest way to do it, right Katie? Is just to create a new section for?
Yep, so there's, yep, so it can be in zoning. That's probably the most common place that it's located throughout communities. But it can be, it really can be anywhere that's an enforceable regulation. So some communities have it in their general bylaws, some communities put it in their wetland bylaws. Again, it varies, but it just seems to be an enforceable place. But like I said, it's most commonly found in zoning across the Commonwealth.
So that'd just be a separate, single bylaw that we would just add in?
Yes.
So it'd be a standalone, is what I'm getting at?
It would be a standalone, yeah. We would add a new article to the zoning bylaws.
Outstanding. I have a question.
Yes.
Katie, Britton Bradford, question. You had mentioned a couple of times that Rutland had opted into this and it will still go to a town vote. What does that mean?
Yep, so, so the community, so at some point, the community, obviously before nineteen eighty-four, when you joined the program, the community must have voted in. So probably if you went back to town meeting records from nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-three, you would find that, right? So when the community agreed to join, again, at that time, they agreed to enforce these regulations, again, found in state building code, Wetlands Protection Act, and typically in local regulations. So with that, at this point, we found that you don't have those local regulations, so that's what needs to be added. As being a participant member of this program, what that means is that flood insurance is made available to anyone in your community, not just that they live in a flood zone or not. So whether they're a renter, they're a business owner, or a property owner, that flood insurance is made available to them through the National Flood Insurance Program. And then that obviously is in return because you're enforcing certain regulations in flood planes.
I appreciate that. Follow-up question. So is this bylaw gonna be a requirement now for those who may or may not have paid flood insurance to now pay in? Or is this simply a, we're just changing the map to say, you know, now we're requiring this, this new flood map, which we haven't seen, we don't know the language of, and then it still goes to vote for the town? So if I'm a member and I'm not privy to all of this information, what information am I gonna get to make this vote on whether or not my property now has to pay flood insurance when I didn't have to before?
Yep.
Do I have an, do I have an, I'm sorry, I apologize. Do I have an appeal process?
Okay, so I wanna go back and answer one thing. So as far as like buy-in, like, so the buy-in is that the community participates and then flood insurance is made available. And if the community doesn't participate, then there's no flood insurance made available. So that's kind of the buy-in there. Now, as far as if a property or a structure is located in one of these flood planes on the flood insurance rate maps, whether the community participates or not, there are certain building code regulations that would apply to that property, again, whether the community participates or not. And there are certain regulations in Wetlands Protection Act that would apply because those flood insurance rate maps are used as determinations for those different codes. The only thing that would not apply is if the community did not continue to participate by not adopting, is your local regulations obviously wouldn't be there because you wouldn't be participating. Now, for any property that is located in a flood plain, if that property has a federally backed financial assistance, so whether it's a federally backed loan, lien, any type of disaster assistance, they're going to be required to have flood insurance for the life of that financial assistance. So like federally backed mortgage, if they're in a flood plain, they're gonna be required to have flood insurance. So that could be through the National Flood Insurance Program, or maybe they would have to go through a private insurance provider to get that insurance. But there will be still certain requirements if they're in the flood plain, whether the community participates or not. It's just if that federal flood insurance is available and then also if there's local regulations. And I should say, I make it sound like it's not a big thing, but you know, obviously your local regulations is also protecting the flood plain, protecting life and property and stuff in the flood plain as well.
So Katie?
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, and also a follow-up question. So if you have a mortgage, right, and you are considered in this flood plain map, which mayor, which we're gonna see updated, that's sort of a requirement. So what's, what's the benefit of the Town of Rutland voting to approve this new map when it's gonna already be a requirement of any property owner anyways? So I guess, I don't know why you'd put it to a town vote when it's gonna be a federal requirement and mortgage companies are already gonna sign off on it. What's the extra, is there any benefit to the Town of Rutland?
Yeah, so by participating, so you have to adopt the local rights, so like the mass model bylaw and the local regulations. And so by adopting that, that's when that federal flood insurance is available. Typically, the federal flood insurance is much more affordable than going through a private insurance provider. There's obviously exceptions to that, but for the most part, that's the general case. So if the town was to not vote on it, was to not participate, then that NFIP, National Flood Insurance, would not be available to those residents or those property owners.
So you'd be forced to go through a private company rather than getting the federal, which like she says, is much more expensive. So it's a matter of eligibility. If we don't adopt, if the town doesn't adopt this, when, nobody is eligible to go through the federal program. That's what she's saying. So you would be on your own, you'd basically be on your own to go to a private company, which is much more expensive. So the requirement isn't eliminated, it's just?
No, it's still a requirement.
Yeah.
My question would be, and I apologize, I'm kinda over talking here, but what's the interest of the Town of Rutland to push this thing through?
That's the interest, is if we don't adopt this language, then the residents of Rutland don't have the option for this less expensive flood insurance through the federal program.
Okay.
They have to go through?
Give it on a map that we haven't seen yet?
No, the maps, yeah, we, we'll see the maps, but the maps, the maps are outside of our, where people are either in a flood plain or they're not, it's?
But those change, John, I'm just saying.
Yes.
Those maps change, and I guarantee you the map that they're gonna present to us is different than what it was twenty years ago.
Right.
So?
And that's why they update the panels.
There may be people affected by this who like, I never had to own flood insurance.
Right.
And now all of a sudden, you're telling me I have to.
But again, whether or not we adopt this doesn't change that. If, if something changes, they have, they need, and it doesn't eliminate the requirement, it gives them a more, a less expensive option by having this language, and it makes them eligible for a less expensive option than they would be.
But Katie and John, correct me if I'm wrong, if that expanded map now shows a property that wasn't in a flood plain and is now in a flood plain, they are required to purchase flood insurance where they may have not before?
If they got a federal loan, federal-backed loan, correct?
It gets any loan.
For the federal-backed, any federal-backed aid.
Right.
Okay. Katie, that was my?
Randy Mae, FHA, like, almost everybody that has?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people that have mortgages.
Katie, this is where I'm struggling. I, I think we're halfway there, we've already adopted the map, we just hadn't done the regulation, is that what I'm hearing? So we just need to clean up the regulation portion? And so that's why I'm struggling with, does it need? The bylaws gotta go to town meeting, I get that, for the vote for sixty-seven percent. But wouldn't that have been done when we adopted it? Or that wasn't?
No.
No, there's nothing in our general bylaws. We've looked, there's nothing in our, our local regulations. We don't have local wetlands regulations. We go by the state wetlands regulations here. And there's nothing in our general bylaws, and there's nothing in our zoning bylaws.
So that's the piece we need to clean up?
Yes.
Is the bylaw portion to tie to the map that we approved that's being updated in two thousand twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-five.
Oh, twenty twenty-five, okay. Okay, now I get the big picture.
Yeah.
Katie, Dick Williams here. How many watershed districts do we have in Rutland?
That is a very good question, and of course watersheds, you know, there's different levels of watersheds.
I know.
Yeah, I can't speak directly, I don't have a map in front of me that different watersheds. I can tell you that what this, with these new flood maps going effective, these are for the Nashua River watershed. And so that's what's being triggered for you guys getting new flood maps, is that mapping project.
Okay, so that tells me you are not in the DC out here in the Klabin area or in West Boylston. So you must be in Boston area? Or you're four kid? We have three, we have three watersheds. We have Weir River, your Nashua, and Chickopee.
Yep, so it's, but so it's the Nashville River, that's the watershed that map, that map, FEMA is currently remapping, and that's what is giving you the new flood insurance maps as part of the Nashua. So that's why Rutland was tied into that, and that's where the new flood insurance rate maps are coming from.
It's only gonna be Nashville River then?
No, they're covering the whole community. It's just that mapping project that you're a part of, so that's why you're getting new maps. So your current maps from the nineteen eighties, I mean, they're, they're old maps, they're outdated data, right? Because they're from the eighties, they're from decades ago. So before that reason, when FEMA updated just the Nashville part, they did the rest of the community as well. So your entire community of Rutland will be getting new digital flood insurance rate maps with this.
And Dick, that's where I gotta follow up. So when they do a Chickopee or, or a Weir River, would that be another update possibly?
It could be, so what that would mean is that your bylaw would already be fully compliant. You would just have to update the new map date when that was to come about.
That's what I was trying, I was trying to get to that point where, okay, I get that you've got money for this project, you're taking care of it, but what if they have this second and third project? How do we tie that into?
This is ideally language that should have been added into our, into the bylaws years ago. I'm not gonna say decades for those of us who grew up in the eighties. I'm gonna say years, okay? So, so, no, but this, no, that's okay. No, but that, this is language that should have been in our bylaws all along that we're, we're trying to correct something that should have happened
Okay, good enough.
long ago. So any other questions from the board? So like I said?
Just be nice if she could come out and visit Rutland to see what it's about.
So from here, like I said, we will begin discussing this, the bylaw subcommittee will be, begin discussing this in January, working up from the state model bylaw. And it will be like any other zoning bylaw amendment. It will go through, every bylaw subcommittee meeting is a public meeting that anyone's welcome to attend. And also, it will be subject to a public hearing before town meeting in May, probably sometime in April, I'm guessing, early April, would be the public hearing that would, that this would be, this would be held for. So that's, that's the process going forward.
So we've got, the bylaw subcommittee will have two big ones to take care of.
This and the ADU?
Yeah, ADU. Exuly dwelling units and the flood. Perfect, thanks.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thank you, Katie, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming in tonight to give us the presentation.
Absolutely. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks, Katie, talk to you later.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Katie.
Okay, next item, end discussion of draft road acceptance policy.
This is not for necessarily a vote tonight of the board because I know it's new to the board. This is something that I've been working on for about a month now, using different communities as examples. This has gone before, to town council for their edits and their comments, which are reflected in this document. It's also going to Quinn Engineering for their approval, which he has approved this. So what this does is this establishes procedures and a timeframe if a developer wants a roadway accepted by the town within a subdivision. Right now, the town has nothing, and I've worked in other communities like, you know, like Rentham, where the process needs to start months in advance. I know what's happened in Rutland in the past, and it happened basically right as I went on vacation in September, right before the November town meeting, is there's been a submission for a roadway acceptance six weeks before town meeting. That's not enough time, especially with punch list items left to complete. So this is, this is consistent with many, many other communities that, that I've found, where it will establish a timeline and a process, and a review process by the select board, by the planning board, before roadways are accepted. It gives, it gives steps in time for not only town council to review legal documents associated with roadway acceptances, but also for Quinn Engineering to have time to review the construction of the roadway and to determine when the roadway is ready for acceptance, when it's completed successfully. So this is something that, again, a lot of communities have that Rutland has never had, but there's definitely a need for something like this because, again, it protects everybody. You know, it protects the town, it protects the developer alike because this ensures that what the town is accepting has been, has gone through the proper legal process, has gone through the proper reviews by the planning board, by the select board, by the town, by the town engineering peer review consultant. So again, this is, this is just for consideration at this point, and I would ask the planning board to review this. And then, once the planning board is through reviewing it and gives its blessing, I would present this to the select board because it's really a policy that they would adopt because they play the most major role in roadway acceptances. So that's why I'm giving it to the board tonight to start taking a look at.
Question, has the, has the select board seen this?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. I wanted to get through those other reviews.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I was curious. I think we need some time to?
Yeah, I've looked it over.
Look it out, and not only that, this does have, has nothing to do how the road was built.
Just the process.
It's just the process.
Acceptance is correct.
Accepted.
Correct.
Yeah, this, the road, when, when the select board refers to the planning board, that's where we go through the details with Quinn, with the?
Exactly.
We have to approve the construct, basically, not approve, but sign off on the fact that the road was built the way?
Correct. The select board will be looking to the planning board to verify that, and Quinn Engineering to verify those things.
And that's where we give our?
Recommendation.
Recommendation back to the select board.
Correct.
This is just the process that they've been looking for.
Yes. And this is very reasonable. I mean, like I said, when I was in Rentham, the process had to start six months in advance of town meeting.
That's what I was gonna say, John, when I saw four months here when I looked it over?
That's very reasonable.
I said, that's fair.
The subcommunities require nine months.
That's eight, eight meetings of ours and the select board to get it through, that's plenty of time.
Considering the fact that the town has had nothing, I didn't think it was appropriate to go that far?
No, I think?
With six or nine months? So that's why I chose the four months, because that's really on the low end of the, you know, thirteen or fourteen communities that I looked at. That's really on the low end of the scale, and I figured that would be, that would be fair to everybody.
We'll have to, if we adopt this, we'll have to see how it goes because sometimes, I know in the past, sixty days wasn't enough to get everything corrected with, when it came to us.
Well, this isn't a guarantee.
Right, if we had notes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This isn't a guarantee because someone may put in a request, and for some reason, there may be things that can't get done in time. It's not a guarantee, it's just it gives the time for the developer to work with the planning board and the select board and town council. And because town council's very, very busy, Quinn Engineering is very, very busy. So it gives them an opportunity to properly review things.
Again, it can always be, if it's a policy, it can be updated. It doesn't need a vote.
Right.
It just needs a select board vote to update the policy.
Exactly.
I'm fine with that.
Anything else? Okay, so you got your homework on the, on that one. Okay, next item, discussion of potential rezoning particles. I don't know, yeah, wow, I don't know. Parcels, twenty-six, twenty-seven, blah, 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 on Maple Ave.
Does it say blah, blah, blah on there?
Blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, it's not official.
I'm alive. Mr. Elbeck?
Thank you for putting me on the agenda, I appreciate it. So I just wanted to bring this before the board. I'm sure many of you remember, this was at town meeting as a citizen's, as a citizen's petition last spring for one eighty-four Maple Ave. Since it didn't obtain a two-thirds vote, we were planning to just drop it and move on, but in the meantime, we've got a lot of positive support, both from, I think, a couple of board members and a couple of neighbors. And a couple of neighbors reached out and asked if we'd consider going forward with it again, including a few more parcels. I don't think I would be successful bringing this forward as a citizen's petition again, and I'm probably not gonna do that. But I'm just bringing it to the board for discussion because I know there was some, some positive feedback from the board. And I just wanted to let the board know that if there's any, any interest in rezoning those parcels, we have three, three landowners that are very supportive and possibly a fourth to the south that's not included here. But Andrew Brown and Ryan Wheeler are very interested. The way these parcels are shaped, you know, it's a main road, it's a pretty good spot for something other than single-family development. The way these parcels are shaped will probably chew up a lot of land with single-family houses. So I think it's a good opportunity for the town to possibly expand the tax base. But I would just, I'm just here tonight to let the board know that you have several landowners that are, that are in favor. I really haven't heard any negative feedback from any of butters. But again, I didn't wanna do it as a citizen petition. I'll just bring it before the board in case the board wanted to bring it through the, the bylaw subcommittee or the zoning subcommittee before next town meeting.
Mark, do you, Norm, are you thinking what the thought process was to expand that to TCD two?
I really am in favor of any change.
Okay.
But I, the original petition was for TCD two to kind of extend down there, it was a nice extension past countryside estates.
That, that was my thought process, that to me would be an easier sale than try to come up with a quote, and I hate using this word, but single zoning area?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Extending it, I could possibly definitely look into. But then my question is, do we go across the street and do one through fifteen to extend the whole zone?
Because that's your next call.
Yeah, exactly.
Why them, not me?
Yeah.
This is spot zoning.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I can get on board with this.
It's extending, because unfortunately parcel twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five sort of was our ending point because that's, that's a different zone sort of was our ending point because that's, that's a different zone for where the, uh.
And you gotta have it somewhere.
Yeah. And so we, we basically used that as our stopping point when we were doing TC two, TCD two. So, going through that and doing five parcels, I got more of a on-board with than I do with just one or two. Because we're, we're extending it, I don't know, four, five hundred feet, eight hundred feet.
So if we, if we were to say, like, let's say we go down that road, right?
Yeah.
And we're gonna say, hey, let's do this. How many units are that, that you got, one, two, three, four, five?
Five large units of property.
And then you got double occupancy on both lots. You got multi-town family, no.
Yeah.
So this is more than just like, hey, let's put some homes here, it's.
Oh, no, no, this, this could be, yeah, you could.
Let's put a apartment complex, let's group them together.
Yep.
And put affordable apartment complexes.
And they could do that.
Much easier.
They could do the, uh, business on, like, we, we tried to do with TC two. Businesses on the bottom and apartments on the top. Or houses on the top or.
So you could do high, you could do high-density residential here.
That could be with a special permit.
Yeah.
That'd be a special permit.
None of this is, um, this is not.
But when we get into this, I, I would, to your point, I'm gonna like, maybe we should look at the other side too to take the whole zone and move it down, extend it. I don't know. Just food for thought, that's all I'm throwing out there. That'll be a long discussion, I know.
Yeah. How many?
Uh, I have all the assessors cards. I, rough guess, just looking at it, fifteen, maybe twenty? I can pull the, I have the assessors cards if you want me to add it all up.
That's, that's close enough.
Yes, yes, it's fifteen.
Actually, I have a.
So, how many multi-family units could go there?
Well, I think the idea is more to generate a spot for something else in town for the tax base, commercial or some sort of other development. You look around town and.
But it's not required.
All of the TC.
I'm, I'm looking at the cost basis.
TC one and TC two is mostly.
Looking at the cost basis for profitability.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
You look around town and most of the TC one and TC two is all single-family houses. So this is an opportunity to.
But you wouldn't want to do that there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, because, Mark, right now the zoning is single-family residential, so.
Right.
If you, if you, you know, if you wanted to single-family, you could right now.
And you should.
Yeah.
The only thing we have to look at, Norm, is that the depth of those properties exceed all of our TC requirements. And we, we try to stay away from that, you know, splitting properties by the TC zones.
Don't do split.
Well, we, in some cases, if you look at the zones, it is.
I know there are, but please don't voluntarily add split zone lots because that is a nightmare.
Again, this is all part of what the, the committee will go through for discussion, but there'd have to be modifications to the TC zone if we extended it, so. I'm just throwing out all of the ramifications. I'm, I'm for it, I mean, if we can get another extended TC, I'm fine with that, it's just.
Now, the only thing that I heard when, when, Mark, you came to town meeting, um, that time, was town meeting members seemed to get a little bit hung up on the fact that it's named Town Center. Because it's so far from Town Center. And that's the, that's what you're gonna have to answer to is, it doesn't mean it's the Town Center, it just means it's a zoning, it's a mixed-use zoning that allows a little bit more flexibly. So, I mean, if the, if the board wanted to explore changing the name of a portion of these zones to make it simpler, they could. But that's what I heard at town meeting was some people got hung up on the fact that this is, this is called Town Center.
We probably should have explained, look at Town Center that goes all the way out to the old honey farms.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a long way from Town Center.
Yeah.
And compared to, we're looking at this, so.
But it is Town Center too because near the actual Town Center is TC one. So, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's something where you want to consider changing the name to, you know, make it a little bit less confusing, I don't know.
Okay, but, so the real reason for the visit is to let you know that folks are in favor. If the board doesn't want to consider moving forward, we would potentially kind of put the brakes on what we're doing as far as developing it, just to see how it plays out. But, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be the, the driver of it because I don't think that would be successful at town meeting. But if the, if the board wants to consider taking it through, you know, we're certainly in favor.
This is to Norm, I, I think we should put it on an agenda item.
Yeah.
And have the board talk about it, and if they decide to move forward, then refer it to the bylaw subcommittee.
So, our next meeting is January fourteenth, so I'm, I'm hearing that you might want to put on that agenda.
Meeting on the twenty-fourth?
No, not me, on Christmas Eve, sorry.
No, Christmas is the next, Ed.
So.
It'll work.
Would that be a suggestion, Tim, is to continue this discussion on the fourteenth? So the board has a chance to think about this?
That's what I think is good because I, I want to get everybody's feedback and it's just in front of us, I saw the map, you know, for four days. And your presentation, what, Mark, what, uh, the landlords want to do is great. Just want to think about it and say, try to come up with all the ramifications we'd have to do.
Yeah, we just wanted to like.
But get feedback from the rest of the board too.
We just want to let you know the opportunity's there. If there's no action, we'll go another.
As long as twenty-six and twenty-nine are all in a, in agreement, because I know last time it was, I think, just twenty-six.
Twenty-six is me. Twenty-seven oh-one and twenty-seven are in agreement. And twenty-nine is in strong agreement because he's, uh, home occupation, so he's kind of already looking to do some business.
But you also have twenty-eight, Mark, right?
Uh, twenty-eight is, the owner status is a little unknown. And I, I haven't, first, I don't have any firsthand knowledge, so I don't want to get into too many details, but I think there's opportunity at thirty-two.
That's just over the crest, going towards Baxton.
The, it's the, um, the, he has the excavator sitting up front, yeah, Zoppo.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I'm all, again, we'll talk about it, I'm all for expanding if we do it right.
I didn't even think to look across the street because parcel one is really not even developable. DCR.
Yeah.
Fifteen, fourteen, and twelve are pretty much fully developed, single-family house because they're small lots. And then I think, uh, I think eleven is protected.
It is.
Yeah.
Is that, uh, Schultz's.
So I don't, I don't think a zoning change across the street does anything.
Also, Tim, what I would recommend with your concern as far as the depth of the lots is, you know, um, look at, we can look at the TC two zoning district to see what the setbacks are and what the buffers are and s, and see if.
Those are my worries is we put a depth, if I remember correct, on three hundred feet or something like that, or I can't remember the number. I'd have to look back at the, the bylaw. But what it did is, some properties in TC one and two had a cut zone through them, but we had to make the decision. We, we couldn't have this, we were trying to make it fair along the whole property line. Again, that's stuff that can be modified, it's not set in stone.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, Tim, because I'm looking, um, up to the north where the TC.
Twenty-three is, is cutting down.
Thirteen, thirteen is a very, very deep lot, it's a very deep, narrow lot, so I could see why you did that.
Eleven and, uh. But, I'm curious, I'll have to look into the thing, lot two on the other side.
The trouble is when you have certain lots.
Oh, it is just the one that's just sitting, okay.
Trouble is sometimes when you have split zone lots, you don't make it any more marketable because of the area that's allowed to be developed is so limited.
Especially when you add in the buffers.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyhow, okay, good enough, I don't want to take up too much time with anything.
Well, I appreciate it.
So, January fourteenth, Mark?
If you'd like me here, I can come, if not, uh, you know.
What do you think, board? Would you like Mark here?
If you need me here, I will.
If you get any more feedback, Mark, that'd probably be the biggest thing, from like twenty-eight.
I can have him send emails to John if you'd like.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And of course, if any of those owners know anybody on one, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen?
Uh, across the street?
Yeah.
I wasn't even gonna bother, but.
Okay.
What's a chain of, uh, change of zoning requirement for a Butters notification for public hearing?
You might, you might be able to do that.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that, I don't know.
If they'd be willing to do that, then we could, I think we'd have a much more accurate conversation.
Yeah.
I think my father might have his number on it.
Such a long time ago.
I'd have to look at Master and the Lord on often, off my head.
I believe he's passed, but.
Yeah, I don't even, I don't even know if it's the son or who's there now.
I couldn't tell you.
It was just, it's just a, sort of a fairness that Britten was talking about.
And the thing is, if the planning board or the bylaw subcommittee wanted to start a public hearing earlier, we can open up a public hearing as much as six months before town meeting and continue it. So if you want to bring the surrounding area in early, we can open up a public hearing much earlier and keep it open through town meeting like we're going to do with the accessory dwelling unit, so we can always do that, we don't have to wait until.
The only thing we can, and we can talk about this on the fourteenth, is that because twenty-six failed in a town vote, does that put the two-year limitation on it?
No, because the planning board voted favorable action on it.
Okay.
So he can come back. And this is not the same rezoning though, it's, it's different.
I just want to make sure eyes are dotted and tees are crossed because we get down this whole thing we presented and Leo goes, uh, no.
No. No, it's because the planning board voted favorable action, they can come back anytime.
Outstanding, thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Take care, Mark.
Okay. Next item is consideration of open space design subdivision for property located off Welchav and Emerald Road. And I'm gathering that, uh, most of the audience out here is probably here, uh, to hear about that discussion. And with that, before we start, I'd just like to explain what the process is for this sort of, uh, approval is. And the board has received, uh, a conventional, uh, subdivision plan and an open space design. And the discussion that we're gonna be having is, uh, it's required as a pre-application review by the planning board. It's not a public hearing and therefore, uh, uh, we probably will have to sort of limit, uh, public testimony, more for discussion between the board members and, and the applicant. Uh, the planning board will discuss the merits of the two possible designs and determine which is preferable to the surrounding area and to the town, uh, as a whole. The board also will schedule a public site walk, uh, which is what we normally do with this sort of an application. The discussion will likely be continued through the planning board meeting on January fourteenth, uh, at which the board may be ready to make a discuss, this decision. Once the board selects the preferred design, the applicant will be allowed to submit an application to the board for a public hearing for that design. And that public hearing is more of the public forum for people to, uh, the public to comment on the merits or non-merits, I guess, I hope that's the word.
Sure.
Uh, you know, uh, of the plan. So, anyway, um, I'm first going to, uh, call the applicant and then ask for comments from the board and, uh, with possibly some limits, uh, entertain, uh, some questions or whatever from the public. So.
Hi, I'm Julian Vortuber from New England Environmental Design. You're at a design firm for Mr. Harity for this project. It's a piece of property off of Emerald Road, do we have a?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get it up there now, I'm having trouble. I also have large copies that people want to look at.
I got one already.
Put on, I didn't bring it, you look at, you know, it's up on the board, but.
It doesn't, it's not going right right now, so.
Okay. Well, Mr. Harity had come to my company and asked, we've got a piece of property here that we'd like to create a subdivision on. And in the town of Rutland, there's a few options that we can do. And one of them is a standard zoning acre and a half, two-hundred-feet of frontage project with roads that comply to the town of Rutland zoning bylaws and subdivision rules and regulations. So a preliminary conceptual preliminary plan was created to come up with the configuration that meets the rules and regulations. And we come up with a twenty-four unit project with three different roads. We can't go over the thousand-foot road limitation, uh, in Rutland for subdivision road, so we had to create an in and an out and create a loop system to meet the rules. So that was a preliminary plan to come up with a concept and how many lots we could get conventionally. We then decided to look into the bylaw, the open space bylaw, which provides, uh, general description is, "It's intent to supplement the Rutland zoning bylaw. An open space design shall mean a residential development in which the buildings and accessories uses are clustered together and reduce lot sizes into one or more groups. The land not included in the building lots or street right of way shall be dedicated as permanently preserved open space. Overall housing density shall not exceed that of which it built under a conventional development." So what that means is we can't create any more lots than are allowed by right through a definitive subdivision process. So where we've created another plan that did exactly what the general description says of reducing roadways, which eventually will be the town's responsibility, and creating a large open space area that nothing will be developed in, which is approximately a third of the size of the project. So, so that's what we have before the board. And typically, what I've done in the past, and I've done probably about five or six cities in the town of Rutland since this bylaw came into effect, is we create these two scenarios and we get a lot count that's approved by this board on, do they agree that the preliminary plan in general form, well, now it's, it's actually a preliminary plan, under the preliminary plan requirements, to come up with a lot count? And then it's the developer's purview whether the developer would like to go forward with the preliminary plan under the conventional system or opt to go with an open space to reduce lots, reduce roadways and create open space.
Sorry, I'm asking to mute, please.
That's all right.
Lisa, do you mind, uh, muting? I think you might be. Thank you, sorry.
Go ahead. Julie, if I'm not mistaken, the open space, just for clarification people, requires a special permit, correct?
It's in the, it's a special permit process.
Well, the definitive conventional plan does not, it's just standard follows the subdivision.
Correct, follow the rules and.
I just wanted to explain it so the public understood.
So there is, there is a special permit process, which would be hearings on, on why, why we, the, the landowners and, oh, there we go. So that is the open space. If you can, maybe we'll be able to flip the, the other. So it's a thousand-foot road that meets the dead-end requirement of.
Yeah, special permit.
Of the town.
Yes.
Do you, any chance to have the, the other plan?
I don't, I don't mean to.
Yep, nope.
Uh, Julian, do you mind, so this is the open space concept?
That's the open space, that's the special permit required to get that.
Just give us real quick, there's a lot of people that are probably looking at this and their eyes are going cross, how many lots are we talking about?
I'd like, can we go to the preliminary?
Can you pull up the, uh, the other plan, please? The conventional?
Or if you put it on the second tab, we can switch between them.
That'd be great.
Uh-oh. Did I just, I, I asked?
It's too much, you can't, can't ask for these things. I'm kidding.
Give it a minute. Nope.
There we go, there's tattoo.
Okay, so what this, what this mean, this is a design that, per the Rutland Rules and Regulations set forth as of today, this is allowed as long as I follow all the, the requirements for the road construction, which we will, the typical road, if you raise this up. Shows a cross-section of what the town of Rutland requires for a road, width, size, yep. That's all the requirements, and that fits in, this is a road, this is a road, and this is a connecting road with cul-de-sac. So now we have a way to get in, we can go through the project and come out and have a, a throughway system. If we didn't have.
Julian, can I add something before you continue? Thank you. So for the public out there, with the conventional subdivision, if he presents a conventional subdivision to the planning board where the lots meet zoning in terms of lot size and frontage and the roadway is built to town standards, the planning board really cannot legally deny it. He goes through the subdivision approval process and they can place reasonable conditions on the impacts of the subdivision, but the planning board cannot legally deny the conventional subdivision plan, that's the difference. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, that's, that's perfect, you just said, that's the next step. So, now what this creates is a lot of roadway that will then be the town of Rutland's responsibility once it's built and approved, that it was built per this standard. So all we have to do is build it per the approved plan and they'll go through the process to get approved by the town. So now, the developer has an option that the town has given a zoning bylaw that allows for what they call the open space, which would be the next plan.
Could you pull that one back up, please? The, uh, the other tab, please, the concept, uh, open space, OSD?
Click.
Thank you, awesome.
So what we've done is taken the same piece of property, the same boundary, same exact boundary that was before, and we've created an open space concept. So instead of acre and a half lots, they're an acre lot. All the reduced area that we got on these lots is put into a large parcel and another little piece over here to give some buffer and to make it an undevelopable, open space area. It reduces the amount of road that eventually the town's gonna have to maintain. So instead of three thousand-foot roads, it's gonna have one one-thousand-foot road. It meets the rules because Emerald Road has two ways you can get to it, from this way and from this side, and you can go a thousand feet, that's part of the subdivision rules and regs and zoning in town, that allows you to go up to a thousand feet. So, we have criteria to meet, I believe we will meet without any problem, any waivers of any kind, all the requirements, and this would be for both sides, for the land, for the neighborhood, and for the future, a better concept to go with. But it does require a special permit, so we, like, need to get the support for the special permit part. As opposed to a conventional by right like John did describe. So that's the project. A little bit about the property is a, it's a ridge. This is a ridge of property, comes like so, this is a higher point, then it flattens out this way. out this way. The wetlands have been flagged, defined, and approved by both the local conservation commission and the DEP, because we went through a process called an NRAD, which identifies the wetlands absolutely without any question. So we were able to come up with our plate and say, all right, we're going to avoid dealing with the wetlands environmentally and create what we can. And that's what we ended up with. So that was a function that the developer's already gone through. So there'll be no wetland alterations or any environmental impacts as far as the Wetland Protection Act on this project as it's shown on this plan right now. We've also gone out and done some official border health soil testing, because this will be water, will be wells, private wells, and the septics will be private septic systems, which require border health approval. First step to a septic system is having a perk test and deep observation holes done, the soil evaluation. So this summer, we have done, all these indicate officially done soil tests just to show that the soils are very conducive to Title V. They were very good rates, everything worked out very well, and it's the same type of soils per the USGDA Soil Conservation Service that shows the same type of soil throughout. So we're confident that there won't be any issues with getting future perks for the rest of the lots. So that's where we're at. And part of the process is to have this meeting with the board. And now it's in both planning board's court and the developer's court on which way we move forward.
Just to add to what you just said, with the perk test and the amount of lots, whatever the planning board approves, whether it's the open space design or the conventional design, whatever goes forward, that's the maximum of lots he's allowed to develop. There's no guarantee that that number of lots can be developed because the perk test may not come back favorable for certain lots. So that's the maximum number of lots that can be built on that property.
Through the chair, the other thing I wanted to add was, there's another process to this, too. There's the con-con version of this that we don't have any interface with. So this whole development, when it goes through the process, and not just the planning board, it's also the conservation commission, has to review this and give their comments. And I apologize if I don't have the right words, orders of condition?
Right, done within 100 feet.
Yeah, correct. So they have to do that, too. So there's another board that gets involved with this type of process, too.
That's another factor when it comes to building on a lot, is they have to meet those setback requirements.
One more thing for everybody is, the conventional by right, following the rules, there were 24 house lots proposed. By going with the open space and being limited to the length of this roadway, I can't go. Physically, I would have been able to go another 200 feet and got six or seven more lots, but the requirement of 1,000 foot cut me off where we actually are coming in with an open space of 22. So we actually let two lots go, but in exchange of less road. So that's another thing that is part of the lot count. That's it. Any other questions?
Questions for the board?
I guess through the chair, the open space design and the open space itself, when you say buffer, it really gives the neighbors, the abotters, some space from this neighborhood. Obviously, conventionally, the other one, you know, not that everyone's going to be renting houses real close to someone's yard or being a noisy neighbor, but it creates a large buffer, too. Is that an intent or just happened to?
Well, that's, clusters, that's what it does.
It's tighten all those homes up, but I'm talking everyone on the outside that may be here today or not here or...
We're limited on, ideally, if we could with terrain and not getting into the design part, but we're out, my main limitation is the length of the road that I can go. So if we had 1,000 acres and I had to put in 2,000 feet of road to get to the center and have no neighbors affected, I can't do it. The rules don't let me do it. So I'm following the rules that are allowed to develop this property.
Keith, just to, again, I looked this over and I've compared them, is that the conventional, and I'm not saying which one is better, which one is, the conventional, a lot of the building portion of the house is still, there's a large buffer zone around the edge, because there's wetlands, they can't get, they can't put a house in there anyhow. So, yeah, the open space, basically, it doesn't allow any of that property to be used. But the conventional plan also has a lot of sections in the house lots in the back that can't be built on anyhow. So there's a buffer, there's sort of a natural buffer, so to speak. So I just wanted to put that out to the board.
I just want to point out that, you know, the two major objectives of the open space bylaw are to, number one, limit infrastructure, a lessened infrastructure, which the, and the town will eventually be taking charge of, and also to preserve open space. The open space shown on this plan will be placed in a conservation restriction under the state so that it can never be developed in the future.
Actually, Norm, our open space design regulations call for a homeowners association to maintain the infrastructure.
No, I don't believe that there would be a homeowner on this. Individually owned.
Yeah, there are several options.
There is an option, so, but...
And as long as the road's built to town spec, that option does not have to be utilized, if I remember correct. It's when you do the private way, is when it's a different discussion.
Yes, if somebody has to maintain a road. This is being proposed to be taken all the way to town.
And Norm, through your...
Well, I'm sorry, can I just address that? Town acceptance is not a guarantee with any subdivision. The town does not have to accept any roadway. You can ask them, you can put that as part of your subdivision proposal, but the board does not have to, the town does not have to accept any roadway or infrastructure. They could vote to have it remain private in perpetuity if they...
And sort of to piggyback off that, I find it really hard to believe that it's in the best interest of the town to accept more roadway, when we have no town sewer, we have no town water, we have no infra, we have, we have nothing in this road.
Well, that's, that's going to be my point. The only infrastructure here is the road.
Right, so what I'm getting at is this, you know, respectfully, this doesn't make any sense for the town to accept this roadway. Knowing our impending budget, and as a sitting member of the CIPC, which I will disclose, understanding what the DPW is requesting, as a part of that, that budget shortcoming that's coming very soon, that everybody's going to, their tax bill's going to go up, I have a real hard time understanding what benefit of the town this is to be a town-accepted way. I don't think it's, I don't think it makes any sense. This, in my personal humble opinion, I'm one man, this should be an HOA road.
Can I ask a question? So...
Having a...
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, and I wanted, and my struggle is, is that I look at it from the two chiefs' perspective with a single access, that I've got 22 plus homes in there with only one way to get at them. With the conventional plan, I've got Welch and Emerald as accesses for fire, ambulance, and police. So that's my struggle, you're right. With this, you get a bunch more road that could or could not be accepted by the town. With the, with the, with the sub, with the open space plan, I got a 1,000-foot road, but I got 24 houses on it, and I got to worry about police and fire getting in there all the time.
Yeah, of course.
That's my struggle right now is with these two plans.
I'm with you 100%. I just, but I don't think either of those scenarios should be a town way. Regardless of, and I don't say regardless, I'm not dismissing it, fire, you know, fire safety is precedent, we all know that, but there's no reason for the town to accept this.
Yeah, I just, yeah. With, with that, would these lots be taxed differently?
I can't answer that question. I don't know, Julie.
The reason, the reason why I ask that is now you're asking them to maintain their own road.
Right.
And pay the same taxes as the guy down the street.
Which has happened before. This is, we're not setting precedent.
Again, this is really getting into a discussion I'll happen...
I'm just letting you know as, because before you go...
Because we choose the design.
I apologize, Sean, sorry.
It's okay.
Before you go and spend, or your applicant goes and spends a ton of money, I would love to have someone on the board who was very honest and open with me right at the beginning and say, hey, look, I like this, I don't like this.
Maybe to change the rules that he's following that say...
Well, hang on, who's, we're having a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
This is simply for your information. You can say, screw that guy, I'll do whatever I want.
Oh, no, no.
I'm just saying, like, we're just having a discussion.
Yeah, I hear you.
Our discussion point is, I'm not a fan because it doesn't do this town any good to own this road. We have a budget, we have a budget shortcoming, and to accept just more miles of road that this town has to maintain now makes no sense, to me, to me, again.
It's what the zoning's about.
Julian, I'm one guy.
I know.
So you don't, you don't have to impress me, you don't have to like convince me.
I have to impress all five of you.
No.
I do.
I promise, it's not that way, but I'm just saying.
You have to have everybody on board.
If you think about it...
So I will confirm this with town council. I'm 99.9% sure that the town is not bound to accept any roadway. I will verify that with town council.
Through the chair, this is what I wanted to say. Maybe to help with this conversation, we have a couple letters from DPW and fire. Should we put that out there now to say what they're...
Absolutely.
I thought that might help out with this conversation, especially...
We do have feedback from them.
So hold on, hold on. So I'm working, I'm sorry, I'm working on getting a letter from the fire department actually giving their suggestion as far as which design they prefer, because I have a verbal from them, but I don't have anything in writing, and I've requested that. So the border health agent simply wrote that he was, he was present during the soil testing and have a good idea on the layout of the, he witnessed the soil testing, that's all, that's all his letter confirms. We do have a letter from the fire chief that gives some suggestions and some comments on either the concept or the conventional subdivision, but he doesn't give a recommendation as far as which design he prefers, although verbally he told me he prefers the conventional because two ways of access for them to get in and out. The police chief has also verbally told me that, but I'm working on getting something in writing. In terms of the DPW director, here's his email from December 4th, and this is part of the public meeting packet, anyone can view this. "After attending the meeting yesterday, I would prefer that the whole project stays in a private homeowners association. I know that's, I know that's probably not going to happen, so as the DPW is concerned, the open space concept would be better because it has less roadway to maintain. My biggest concern is the width of Emerald Road where the developer enters it. The road in this area would have to be widened to accommodate passing vehicles such as school buses with enough room on the shoulders for snow stores." So that's his preference, is that, is that the roadway remain private.
Regarding towns not accepting, well, okay, go ahead.
So I actually have two questions. Oh, Jim Harity applicant.
Do you have, are you, you have an address just for...
139 Turkey Hill Road, Rutland.
Perfect, thanks.
So I guess, you know, whether the town would not accept the road would be information that we would need even before a preliminary plan was submitted. So I don't know how that process would work. And my, my other question would be, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Britton.
Britton. So would, like, are you opposed to all new roads being?
No.
So what specifically?
That's not, I didn't say that.
Well, no, so that's why...
I'm talking about this project specifically.
Yeah, so specifically.
I'm not going to go into...
This is the project before the board right now.
Potential issues, I'm not going to do like, what if it's this, what if it's that? I'm not, I don't do what ifs. All I'm saying is, I'm looking at the project that you have presented with the engineer, and I see no benefit to the town of Rutland to accept this as a public way. Again, I am one guy.
No, I understand.
There are five other members, or four other members on the board.
What would help us is what criteria you're using to make that decision?
There's, there's no town sewer, there's no town water, there's no, there's no interest in the town to own this road.
Why would water and sewer be of interest if it's a private well and septic? You guys making money on sewer and water?
Let me ask you a question, why wouldn't it be?
Why wouldn't it be? Because it's one less thing that the town has to maintain.
To go off Britton's comment about the roads is...
That's what they're lost for.
One of the reasons this property wasn't purchased by the towns was said is these roads are not acceptable, Emerald and Welch. So it's already been stated publicly, that's the reason.
Where'd that come from?
From the select board, actually.
Yeah, look up the minutes.
It's a public road, that's not even a question.
Well, I...
Not even a question.
Julian, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just, I'm putting it out there that it was said that the reason that property wasn't purchased because of the road condition. So to Britton's point, I'm just reinforcing what his point is, that's all I'm saying.
I just want to bring one thing on the process. We follow the rules.
Yeah.
Before he starts the road, he puts up a bond for the entire road. He doesn't have to put a shovel in the ground. He says, I'm, you can call my bond, build a road and build my lots, those lots exist. That's the law. That's not how we want to do it, that's not how anyone would ever do it, but that is the law. So as far as saying that we won't accept this road, if it's built per your rules and regulations completely by the approved plan, it will be approved by the town.
No, sir.
I built, I built a few roads in this town.
I'm going to have to check on that, I don't know if that's true.
No.
I'm going to check on that with town council.
I built some roads in this town personally, and I'm, I'm positive on that, or I never would have done that, so...
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, calm down. All roadways go to town meeting for acceptance.
Correct.
If town meeting votes it down, they don't get accepted.
Come back another time.
That's, that's the law, so I don't think that's legally true that the town is bound to accept any subdivision roadway that's built to design standards.
But it does, it does, it does go to town meeting.
It does go to town meeting, that's right. So town meeting can always vote it down, even though the select board and the planning board recommend it to town meeting that it gets approved, the town can also, can always vote it down.
I think we're jumping the gun, we're looking to get the road started before we get excited.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So let's come back to, we're looking to follow your rules, is what we're saying. We want to follow your rules to go forward.
Norm, to back up, we're just trying to come up with which concept is the choice.
Right, that's where we're at right now, because there's going to be a whole separate public hearing process for whichever design is...
Getting into the weeds right now, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
In all the years that I've done this, and I'm going to date myself, since 1986, in this town, is my main town that I do work in, I've never approached the board with that being a question on which way we want you to go. That has never been said. It's, give us a lot count, you choose which way you want to go, and we go through the process. And I know that the three of you have dealt with that on many, many different projects. So that's, I just wanted to say that, because that was a little bit of a...
Well, we've had...
I opened it on mine.
Through Norm, I know on my tour duty here, we've had, and it might have been you, Julian, but we've had other developers that have brought multiple plans to us for concept relief. I remember Hilltop Estates being one of them, that's a recent one, there was multiple designs put in front of us. Which do you feel that would be the most applicable to the town? That's just one that I remember off the top of my head, so we've had...
That wasn't an open space. That was a, for Route 56, Lenny Gango's project was open space, Cleese Bear Hill was open space, Moose Crossing was open space, and Central Three Estates was open space.
We even had with, what's the Cleese over, I'm having a brain death, off of 122 and Tarnic Hill.
Price of State.
Price of State.
Yeah, that's open space.
Yeah, but there was multiple revisions and designs to that, if I remember.
But it was only mainly environmental on that one. But that's, that's what I get on it.
Again, I don't want to get into the weeds, I'm just saying that, correct.
So it is a zoning allowable use, yes, through special permit, but what I'm hearing is not what I, I still believe fully that the landowner and the developer chooses his route following your rules. Yes, there is a, there is a special permit to overcome, but if we follow all the rules, I would say that that would be a very achievable hurdle, as it has been in the last thirty.
Through the chair, the only thing I want to warn is, like you said earlier, the subdivision, and John had said, when you walk through the conventional, as long as everything's followed to the T, we have no refusal right. Special permit, I'm not saying we have or it could, but that does have a...
It does.
It does have a potential.
But we have the same rules that we have to follow, so, because it's open space, we still have the same road, infrastructure, drainage, stormwater setbacks, all that's still the same, but it's, when we first brought this open space to the town, that was like a wonderful thing, because there's so many areas that for the wildlife and for the trees and all that was preserved.
Julie, I was just wanting to define the two differences, as conventional, no fit, no refusal, special permit has that option, that's all.
Couldn't be any greater than one-third for wetlands.
No, and he puts, he puts that on the plans, Dick, those are on the plans. This plan would not be before the board. They actually submitted another concept that Norm and I looked at, and it didn't come before the board because it proposed duplex lots, which is not allowed in open space, and some of the, some of the dimensionals didn't comply, so that's why they came back with a new design. All, what you see in front of you, both conventional and open space conforms to the town, to the regulations.
Our first step is to get lot count.
Say again, 29.?
20.9 is what I think I read, yeah.
For wetlands?
For open space. I don't know what portion of that is wetlands.
Trying to think.
8.36 is wetlands.
It's not going to happen.
But it's got a table right here, on the area table.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so to Julian's point, we've got a potential lot count, to break it down easy, and again, I'm not going with either one, 24 or 22? Am I going any simpler than that?
That's as simple as it is, and that should be actually irrelevant anyways, whether it's five or 10 or 100 or 200, but...
The only thing is, as long as the 22 is under 24, we're good. If it's 26, bad day.
Doesn't work. Doesn't work, can't do it.
That's it, okay.
So... So, I believe the developer, landowner's next move is to get a lot count, a preliminary plan approved by the board for a lot count to say, yep, this project is gonna have twenty-two, twenty-four house lots. Go with which way you wanna go and submit and see where, where it falls, but if we come in with twenty-eight lots on an open space, you can now move, and within one second say, walk out the door and come back when you get the right lots.
Correct.
Do you wanna open up for comments from the questions?
That's why I was gonna shut up and let you public speak.
Is there anything else from the board, first of all?
Nothing at this moment.
But my, my only concern, talking about not having the town accept a road as, as a town road, I realize that it does go before town meeting as a vote and it can be turned down, but I do think in, I don't wanna necessarily use precedent, but past practice has, has been, that it is pretty much a, you know, the reason for our subdivision regulations is so that the road is built in such a manner that the town is, should be willing to accept it. And certainly to.
And there are other reasons.
To just pick and choose, the subdivision, yeah, we'll accept the road, the subdivision will not come, this one we will, I think that is a dangerous, dangerous.
And there are other reasons, Norm, there's emergency access reasons for, to be designed a, a certain way as well, for safety of, of people that need to drive over it.
Anyway, okay, with that, people are very patient sitting here, so anyone have any questions, comments?
Norm, should you mention that the people on the screen, if they got questions, should do raise their hand so you can see that they've got a question?
Yeah, okay. For those who remotely out there, if you do have a question or comment, if you can raise your hand, I'll try to get to everybody in a reasonable order here. Yes?
Hi, Robin Oliver sixteen Fairview Ave. I just have a quick question. Is there any way we can just pull the map up because it's regarding the map?
Can we formally, with the open space?
Did you?
Which ma'am?
Either one, either one, it's just, yeah.
All right, there, oh, there we go.
There we go.
Okay, so we're very familiar with this land. This land was in our family for nine generations until we had a family member decide to sell, and we have multiple families and original Welch homes still on Emerald Road. So we are very familiar with this land. My question is, at the bottom of the barway where the setback runs, when you were talking about the wetlands and what is protected, that's all swamped behind that. My question is exactly where that setback runs, because there is a natural spring that runs there all year long that does not dry out. So when you were discussing the wetlands and the swamp lands, was the natural spring also in consideration of where the setback? Cause my guess is that the setback runs from the barway all the way up to.
This is the wetland line.
Yep.
Per Mass, DEP, Wetland Protection Act.
Sure.
This is a one-hundred-foot buffer zone.
Buffer, yep.
Anything done within this has to go through conservation and.
Right.
Wetlands. We're actually not proposing any buildings within the hundred feet. So, excuse me, so this, this is all protected area where we're not proposing to change the wetland or any of the buffers. Possibly a little bit of buffer work here, but that's when we're getting into fine detail.
That's what I'm, I'm just wondering if you have an approximation of the spring, because the swamp, the swamp is there, and that's great.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Behind the buffer zone, but there is a natural spring that runs and.
Which is on the other side of that buffer.
Which is on the other side of that buffer. I just wanna make sure that that was, and I mean, we know this, no, it's on the, on the other way.
No, 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 all the way, all the way, keep going.
Yeah.
Down a little bit, where your fingers.
Yes.
Well, this, this is all high and dry all the way up until.
Yeah, other way, other way, Julian, other way.
This is all high, this is all high, high and dry, but if you come down, 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 down.
Your finger down, keep going down.
Yeah.
Down, down, left.
If you come into the left, it's actually there.
I, I've walked every square inch of that property and I didn't see that.
There, there is a spring that runs and it runs year round.
There's a tin cup hanging out.
This was reviewed.
Tin cup sitting there from when my dad used to drink.
And through the chair, that, that's conservation.
No, 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 I understand that.
Unfortunately, we have no purview.
No, 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 absolutely. That was my question, is if we're taking into consideration the swamp land, which that is swamp land, is that natural spring that's running through there, which, where, we know where it is, we know that land's like the back of our hand, it's within one of those lots. And if that's even going to be addressed, consideration taken into it.
We have no, we have no purview.
No, that, that was my question for Julian, is just if that included the natural spring.
We will take all the environmental things into consideration, that we have to.
Yeah, the conservation commission will, will consider that.
Sure, thank you.
And literally, you should probably bring, if you've got questions, when Julian and the applicant and before the con con, that'd be a perfect place to ask those questions.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it's the.
Could you, could you please introduce yourself, name and address, please?
Brian Mellon, I live off of thirty-five Vista Circle. And, you know, my only point in regards to these lots or cluster lots is really the value of cluster home building over time. It's usually lower values of homes that are built and, you know, and is that what we're focusing versus more the open space where the lot values, you know, the overall value of where people are coming into town? I'm not so sure that they want really low cost living in cluster lots, just to preserve some open space that is maybe woods and things that are not really usable to the town. So that's my only opinion in regards to cluster lots.
I don't think the town's gonna take it. They have them in the future, in the past, rather, I don't think. Anyone else?
My name is Eric, it's five Stevens Way. The last twenty-four hours has brought a lot of knowledge to me. I'd also had the opportunity to have, take John around both sides of the neighborhood. I don't know as much about Emerald side, I'm on the Cool Sandy Beach side. And I realized that Cool Sandy Beach in general is not a direct abutter to this development. But no less, it has angered everybody down there to know and find out what's going on for many reasons. One reason is Cool Sandy Beach, which as you know, it's a public way down there, but the beach is a private beach. Yes, we got signs and everything up there that says private beach, but even people that move in, we've had three new houses on Welch, they walk down there, they're not supposed to. When I look at both of these concepts, and I see two concepts, the first one with the conventional one is probably the worst one for us, because you have an exit onto Welch. Having an exit onto Welch is gonna allow these people from this development to exit Welch as well. By exiting Welch gives them more easy access to the beach, which not gonna have a right to that beach. We can try to stop them, but they're not gonna stop. They can eat, people, you could tell people to go away, doesn't mean they're gonna go away. They could bring cars down to the beach. They bring cars down to the beach, then we gotta get the police department involved. We gotta get the cars moved, we gotta get the confrontations off the beach. So that's one problem. The other problem is just looking at the construction. Even going with the open space, we got three or four houses, but you only got like three driveways. If you come down, as I showed John, when you come down Welch, where this is proposed is a curve. That's a dangerous curve. Even Emerald's not that wide, but Welch is not wide either. There's a house right in the same spot that had deceptic systems and tiny driveways. They had construction vehicles. It was blind going up there. I almost got hit more than once. So with a development over here going in, this construction's gonna be blocking that road and tying up that road in that aspect. So you've got also the issues with the traffic and the problems that that's gonna cause. And on, versus Emerald, now Emerald granted, you can go all the way around, it's a long ride, all right, to go all the way around, but for us, Welch is our own in and our own out. The only way in and out. If, if you go back to two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when they had the ice storm, we had a couple poles and trees come down. We were locked up for a couple of days until they blocked, took it out of the road.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, there's, there is no other way out, we're locked in. So this is a, a really bad news for us. And I realize with these developments happening like this is because bad decisions by the select would over the past few years. We can't stop it, but it's really, it's tough to see. I know when I moved out here to Rutland myself twenty years ago, seeing, we used to come up Emerald, it was all houses, there was no houses, it was all woods. Up Walnut Street was all cornfields. And now our last bit in our neighborhood, this development going up, there's no more, will be no more going just up to Welch and seeing trees and fall, it's houses, houses that we go, and houses that are gonna disrupt the neighborhood. I don't know what changes, maybe we can't stop this legally and there's nothing we can do now, but there's gotta be a way to advocate to prevent this from happening in the future. Find answers. Listen to us, listen to all the residents, hear what we have to say. I know I'm listening, I wanna do it, I hope you do too.
Anyone else?
Those roads, like he just said.
Use yourself, ma'am, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elizabeth Hussey ninety-seven Turkey Hill Road. Those roads are not appropriate for this in any way. If you drive on them, you will see that, when those houses that are there went in, the road was blocked frequently by construction vehicles. And when the town declined taking that property, the plan that was presented was for seven house lots. If this is what you wanted to do, then why didn't you say thirty house lots? That's all I have to say.
It was, it was something on the screen, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, Bob. We got Bob Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good to see you again. Bob Cox sixty-six Emerald Road. I have a question on the unit or house calculation under the conventional plan, and then how that translates to the open space plan. I believe that in order to have a calculation on the regular conventional type plan, it needs to be buildable lots. The plan that the applicant is showing here shows a wetland crossing, a resource area crossing. So help me understand from your perspective, when the board makes a determination as to what the actual building lots are, and whether it would include an unpermitted crossing of a road to get to additional lots, to go into the calculation of the total units or houses that might be available?
I believe, and I don't think this was done yet, the preliminary of the conventional plan should go to Quinn Engineering for an actual determination.
Yes.
Of the lots.
So to answer Bob's question.
For verification.
We'll have our engineer make sure that, that's verified before we.
Because, because he's absolutely right, the comment is valid where, when someone presents a lot count plan, you know, anyone could put lines on a paper and say, yes, I can build this, but they actually have to be, verify that the lots can actually be constructed as they're laid out.
And that's why we use our consultant to verify that.
There's two projects.
Thank you, appreciate, appreciate the response.
Crossings are allowed. We have a bridge down off of Bear Hill. We also have a large culvert system just downhill from that bridge that's being constructed as we're speaking. So that crossing is completely viable, one hundred percent, and it's not an outstanding water resource, so it doesn't have the same characteristics as the ones that I just mentioned. So no problem putting in a crossing on that if we decide to go that route.
We have Darrell.
I'm sorry, can I, can I ask for clarification? You talking about this parcel?
This parcel. Julian Votruba from New England Environmental Designs, just you know who I am.
I know you, Julian, but I.
We can cross the wetlands.
Are you talking about this parcel?
This parcel here, we can cross that wetland if we chose as a limited project to add those lots. So those lots are very viable.
Well, let me, let me make that question clearer. Do you have a permitted crossing from?
I don't have to have a permitted crossing, I have to have a way to show that I can make it happen. I don't have to prove the permit to get.
And again, Julian, to the point I made earlier, just because he shows twenty-four or twenty-two lots, that doesn't guarantee those lots will be built. If, if there is a, a roadblock that comes up in permitting somehow.
Yeah.
Then the lot count may be reduced for some reason, so that is a possibility, I'm not saying it's not, you know, but again, we'll have to get into the public hearing process of whatever design is recommended by the planning board before that's determined.
Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Greg Harrison sixteen Fairview Ave. At, at what point did we deviate from the seven plot plan, or the seven lot plan that was initially discussed months ago? A, a year ago, I guess?
I, I don't know.
Cause Mr. Harity bought it.
Yeah.
Where, where did we, where did we go from seven lots to all of a sudden twenty-four? I'm curious about.
I mean, it really, I don't know, I don't, I honestly don't, don't believe that's relevant because these are the plans that the board has before them now. Those board, those plans never came before the board, so wha- what happened back a year ago, I don't know, because that.
It's A and Rs.
Oh, A and R lots, okay, so those, those were A and R lots that were already on a public roadway, so they didn't need to go through the subdivision process there.
So those were existing lots?
Yeah, they were, they were on a roadway.
For clarification, that was just my.
Though, that wasn't subdivision.
Anything internal couldn't have been A and R, there had to be a public road to be able to do that.
Service.
Yes.
Okay, I get, I get, I'm tracking, thank you. That was, appreciate you.
Yep.
Darrell McCall?
Yes, thank you very much, Darrell McCall twenty-nine Emerald Road. So over the past year, we've had the opportunity to see the homes across the street being built from us, and we've run into, you know, our neighbors have run into issues. I heard Ms. Hussey say this earlier, but we've just had a great deal of traffic and construction equipment already take place, you know, over the past several weeks. So one of the things I'm a little worried about is continuing to have more houses being built further down the road on Emerald, which is already a, a tight road to begin with. So having the one-way in, one-way out eighteen homes, because I think that's the number of homes for that particular plan, but eighteen homes using that road, just think, you know, two to three cars per home, it's mind boggling, because again, I've seen this road for the past twenty-five years, we've lived on it, we, you know, we know that buses are, you know, oftentimes, I mean, I was the superintendent here, buses oftentimes had a hard time traversing Emerald Road. So putting more traffic onto that road, more construction vehicles, it doesn't make sense. We know that the, there is going to be a plan associated with, you know, the traditional plan, having a road going outside toward Welch. You know, none of them are perfect, but having an outlet for that many homes versus all of the homes, basically, you know, with the exception of four homes on Welch, all of the other eighteen homes exiting and entering through Emerald just doesn't make any sense.
So this is the reason we're doing this, folks, is because there's a lot of thought and information to gather for the board to make a decision as far as which concept is, is preferable, so.
Okay, anybody, anything further?
I just.
Yes?
Greg Harrison again, I just wanted to put on record that, and, and apologize, I know that it's difficult to consider, but I really honestly believe that the two exit option would be more viable from a safety standpoint, both for the fire department, the police department, and emergency services. I understand that puts a burden on Welch, however, I think that it, it would make more sense from a long-term, we're already, we're already doing this project, so we might as well mitigate the risk to everybody involved. That's all.
Unfortunately, I, my opinion is I like the open space because, like open space, number one, but number two, I think some of the houses, too bad, we couldn't put cornfields back in there and spread a little of Jordan's fertilizer and that should take care of the rest of the neighborhood.
I don't know, I don't know if anyone misses Jordan's fertilizer.
No, but I mean, in, in, in all honesty, uh, in the past, I've liked the open space, part of it. I know that, uh, read about the fire chief wants to have, uh, easier access in and out and fire ponds and everything else he wants to, but, uh, I don't know, I, I just, I'm just, I, I, let's put it this way. It's either this for me, or I'm ticked off because the select board voted it down for not buying it.
Yep, amen.
Again, again, that's, that's in the past.
Can't say. No, it's.
Well, no, that's not.
Also, I want it stuck in their mind too.
You cannot ring that bell, so.
Ring, ring, I'll ring it all the time.
Yes, so.
Okay.
So, this should be.
Who?
Oh, Julie.
Okay, Julie? Julie Frichette?
Yes, hi. Can we turn your sound off? Uh, good evening, everyone, Julie Frichette, twenty-nine Emerald Road, thank you for this, uh, meeting. So I, I wanted to ask a question about the mitigation efforts that in the past were unsuccessful for water deviation from the driveways that were across from our house, our neighbors' homes and theirs. You know, there were provisions that even within the, uh, EPA guidelines to not use, for example, straw, it was not a successful attempt to mitigate water. I took photos of it and sent it to the town. Um, our, the DPW actually had to come and contacted three of us, three residences, to have our driveways redone. Um, I believe it was ten feet in, we had to have everything repaved to try to deal with some of the mitigation efforts for the water runoff that were not dealt with. And those mitigation efforts unfortunately have not proved successful. So my question is, what will the town do with putting all of these additional homes, regardless of, of, you know, whether the road is a town road or a private road? What mitigation efforts will be done for the water runoff? Because it was really not handled well last time, and we still haven't fixed the problem.
So, can I address that quickly? Well, whenever an application comes forward for whichever design, and it goes through the review process and the public hearing process, the planning board's engineering review consultant, Quinn Engineering, is going to review the topography plans and whatever, um, drainage, uh, plans, stormwater management plan is presented by the applicant. And he will determine, he will make an, he will make any comments that he feels are necessary to either tweak what they proposed or confirm what they, that what they proposed is adequate. I don't know, with the lot she's talking about, those may not have come before the planning board, those may have been individual lots, and then they weren't, so they wouldn't have been subject to review by Quinn Engineering.
An A and R lots, mostly.
They were A and R lots, so, so that's why, that's why, um, Julie, is, is those probably never came before the planning board for that level of review, because when an A and R lot comes before the planning board, all the approval the planning board gives, the li- the level of review for an A and R lots are very, very limited. Basically, the board is only, it's all, it's all about access. And so, as long as they have a lot that has proper access, the planning board can't deny it. So unfortunately, that's state law. So, I think that was the situation for those lots was, they didn't have an engineering review when they were constructed, so, um, that, that was probably part of the problem. But for this project, Quinn Engineering will do the review of the topography and the stormwater management to make sure that, that any issues are addressed and that, and that doesn't happen.
Of either design.
Okay, if I, if I can follow up, then as far as, you know, as we know, there's theory and there's practice. Uh, there's what's on paper and, and what happens, you know, in real life. So, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, there was language written by the EPA about how the mitigation was supposed to be handled that was not followed. What will the town's obligation be in this case to regulate and monitor and ensure? You know, it's not about, well, it passed or it didn't pass, or this was the theoretical plan. What happens if that plan doesn't work? What will be the regulatory responsibilities for the town to ensure that, that all the other residents don't have additional water runoff onto their lots?
Tim, do you wanna?
I, I, my opinion is, I wouldn't answer that because the only thing that the planning board has authority over is the design and the orders of, or the conditional orders that we put with the.
Orders, the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I, anything outside of that would be the specific department. If it was.
Conservation.
Conservation, uh, health, if it was a septic system, so those would be the, um.
Or building.
Departments or building department would have to go to. The planning board only has a specific authority that we can enforce. That's, that's my, that's my sort of answer, what we shouldn't.
But when we start the review and public hearing process, any member of the public that has any comments or concerns can either submit them in writing to me to give to the planning board and Quinn Engineering, by email or by memo. So you can, you can.
John, what I was trying to answer is, I, I, and Julie, you tell me if I'm wrong, you were talking about towards i- i- in the middle of construction and issues that come up in the actual, uh, final, if you wanna call it paving. Is that where you were, is that where you were pressing the question?
Yes, and even before paving, uh, when, when the lot was built. But then the conservation committee had some regulatory, um, you know, statutes and so forth that were not followed, and concerns were raised by the residents.
That's, that's, that's the conservation commission. They have erosion control measures that they, that they.
Yeah.
Regulate, and it's, they, they, they need, they have to go out and inspect those. The planning board doesn't go out, they, we have no enforcement capability on those types of things.
I mean, our, our main through the chair is, we're the roads and the subdivision, that's what we handle for. Anything that has to do with environmental or water, um, that's the conservation commission.
Yeah, because I know when a project like this starts construction, say there are erosion controls like silt fencing or hay bales or straw waddles required for installation, it's up to the conservation commission to have their representative go out and inspect that those were installed properly. I know, 'cause I've been on those inspections before with conservation agents. They have to make sure, and they have to make sure that they're maintained through winters and things like that, because obviously, wear and tear, silt fencing gets knocked down, you know, wind and snow and water. So, those measures have to be maintained throughout the life of the construction.
And then who does enforcement fall to at that point?
The conservation commission.
So they're responsible?
It's their responsibility, yeah.
Conservation commission and the building department.
But in that case, it's conservation commission.
Correct, but they can, they can stop or order.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Just, there's a couple of, uh, points that I hope, it might be able to help me understand a little better. Just so, to prepare for an application, and to help us which way we're gonna go is, um, so in the discussion around the, the taking of the road seemed very subjective to me. But is it really that subjective? Like you can just decide not to take the road? That it has to be a private road and if, because like if that's a decision that someone is going to make, shouldn't that be, like, at the preliminary hearing stage?
But it goes to town meeting, Jim. It goes to town meeting eventually, and ta- and the, the select board and the planning board could put it for acceptance, and for whatever reason, town meeting can vote not to accept it.
Yeah, that, that's the, that's the risk, is that the.
There is a risk.
Planning board could both, both fit, it's like, it's like a town meeting with budgets. There's the FICOM, and everyone says, yes, we agree to it. But if the town physically votes no, it's nothing any of the departments or boards can do about it.
I think we just experienced this at the last, at the last town meeting where the select board and the planning board recommended favorable action on an article, and it didn't get approved at town meeting. So we can't control what happens at town meeting necessarily.
But is it really that subjective? Or aren't there criteria that they have to make a decision based on some standards?
Town, town meeting doesn't have to give their reasons.
Yeah, see, that's, it's, it's, it's a vote. I mean, it's fifty percent, it's not, it's not six, it's not two-thirds like it is with the zoning bylaw.
And is there an appeal process to that?
For town meeting, I, I, you, I.
If I'm not mistaken.
Honestly, at this point, I'm, I'm not, I can't give you legal advice, I can't give you legal advice. Guys, I could just tell you what the process is, as far as town meeting goes.
My, my guess, and again, this would be something either through Julian or, or through an attorney you'd ask is, you'd have, I think he's already said, you'd have to bring it back before town meeting again. Either the fall or the, the spring town meeting. Don't take that as gospel.
And again, like we just explained earlier in the meeting, if the planning board votes favorable action on something like that, it can come back at any time. It doesn't have to wait the two years. If, if, it's only if the planning board doesn't vote favorable action, town meeting votes it down, it has to wait two years to come back.
I think, Norm, I've only seen that in my time done here once, and that was with Bryce Lemon. Road, yeah.
Yeah, well, because there were still issues with the road.
Correct, and it wasn't, because it wasn't constructed correctly, it just wasn't finished.
And, and Jim, all this is to say, I'm not trying to imply that when we get into the public hearing and we start discussing a project, that the planning board won't recommend that the roadway become a public roadway. It's just, I don't believe legally they have to, and that's what I wanna check on with town, with the town council.
Appreciate that.
It's just. Don't hurt the plans, they have to.
Okay. So my other, my other question was, um, around the, uh, the twenty-four lot concept plan in the open space plan. It's like I, I was under the understanding that, um, you know, the open space would be preferable, so it wasn't even really an option to present the twenty-four lot plan, conventional plan, as an option, but just as a, as a lot count. I mean, we can do that, but it is like, I didn't think.
Lost two lots.
I didn't think that that would really be what you wanted me to do.
But, like we've heard, we have differing opinions on, the town has differing opinions. The fire and police have one opinion, the DPW has another opinion, so.
The board might have different opinions too.
Again, I, I've been through this process. When I was in Rottling, they had a ninety-two lot open space preservation subdivision. And he presented, the applicant presented a conventional and an open space. And it was unanimous that the town preferred the open space because the conventional would have meant four dead-end cul-de-sacs. And the DPW didn't want that, the fire department didn't want that, they wanted one continuous roadway going throughout. So in that case, it was clear that the town preferred the open space design because of the way the roadway was laid out. Here, it doesn't seem like it's as clear, from what I'm hearing. So I think the next step is to talk about it.
Yeah, so.
Sightwalk.
The, the.
Yep.
Because I'm not sure whether it's a, like a binary decision for the board right now. Isn't it more?
What do you mean a binary decision?
Plan A or Plan B? Isn't it, isn't it like m- my choice which one to present?
One's a special permit.
Well, he can submit whatever.
He can submit whatever he wants, but it's up to the board, yeah.
Yeah, i- i- you can make a choice and submit it. It's just one will be a special permit and one will, like Julian said, it follows, it follows exactly subdivision, uh, rules and are, as long as everything is follows the rules and is gonna be built to concept, we have a, we have a no, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? A, a no option to.
So that's the thing, so the board will decide which, which plan they think is preferable, and if you decide to go against it, that's on your own risk.
Good speak. I've been involved with quite a few projects in this town, open space, conventional, quite a few. And the open space is typically been a better option because of infrastructure for both sides. And for the environment, as Dicky, you've been a very big advocate of open space, probably why we even have it in this town. But, the open space also has rules, it's a special permit, but it has all the subdivision rules and regulations for roadway construction that are required. And it's, it is a special permit, so it is a, a four-member vote versus a, a majority vote. And we'd like to go that route, 'cause it's better for both sides. But, it's an option, and the option is the landowner's option, not really to say, yep, discount your open space 'cause we don't like it. It, it really shouldn't be looked at it that way, and I feel that that's being kinda presented to us that way, that open space is not really the way because of certain reasons or certain situations. So, it's really the purview of the landowner on which way they want to try to get it approved.
Julian, wouldn't you wanna have the, uh, majority opinion?
Oh, definitely would, but.
That's why they have gone, that's why they, I agree with you.
Definitely would, but.
It's Jim's choice of which way to go, but.
I guess it's gonna be our job to try to, infrastructure is the most expensive part of the entire situation. So the less, that's the whole reason why open space was brought in, not to go back, way back in time, but that's what it was brought in for, back in two thousand, or nineteen ninety-eight, or whatever it was. And I've been involved with pretty much every single open space project in this town, from day one and before. So, it's your decisions, but it's actually the landowner's purview on which direction he'd like to go.
Sure, it also increases the density of the housing.
It doesn't increase any density, and that's not true. We can only go with what can be done conventionally. That's, that's, there's no increase in density.
Now, I think when he says density, hold on, hold on, Julian, I think when he says density, I think what he means is the configuration of the lots are different.
Dimensions.
Where you have houses closer to each other in a, in open space design.
It's a cluster.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but that's, that's. But it reduces the amount of house lots because of the open space.
By two.
Yeah, by two.
So, I think. I brought that up, just because I'm just wondering, 'cause I, like, when Norman was reading the introduction.
That's my own.
And then there was some talk about maybe doing a, a site visit, and then coming back and the board making their decision what's planned to go to in, in two weeks, it's like. I mean, I mean, is that, is that where?
From what I understand, hold on, what I understand, the planning board, when Norman told me, the planning board always does a site walk on this.
Yes.
When it's presented, yes.
But they don't say, okay, not once since nineteen eighty-six, or since this open space has come into, which is late nineties, have I ever been involved where the board said, go open space on this one, go conventional on this one? It's never been that way, and it's always been leaned, open spaces.
I'm, I'm, I'm not a big fan on, you do something just, 'cause that's the way it's always been done. I'm not, I'm not a big fan of that, that's not a, hold on, that's not a reason to keep.
Precedent is all the reason.
No, it's not, it's not, no. There's no legal, there's no, no.
Okay, that's. Jim, I, I don't use the word decision, I think more of, the planning board doesn't wanna tell you what to do, we wanna give you suggestions, what we think. And ultimately, it's your decision. You're the one gonna do the presentation. Yeah, a- and I think that's what the board wants to do, the site walk, have a talk, and then maybe give an opinion, but.
Three thousand feet of road versus a thousand's definitely go with three thousand.
Opinion, again, I don't, I don't think we have the authority to tell you what to do.
Well, that's, I agree with that, that's, I guess what's, that I've been feeling that that's what this was coming down to, that, well, we're gonna pick this, and this is what you go with.
And then if we give you an opinion, that is not an, that's not a stamp.
No.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I got to say.
With, with that, since the subject of the site walk has come up.
Christmas season is.
Yeah, Christmas season.
This morning.
Considering, considering, uh, the hours of daylight, I don't certainly think it can be part of the meeting.
Two of us are working construction guys.
And I'm gonna just propose this coming Saturday.
I'm out of town Saturday, I mean, you guys feel free.
You have two people, 'cause I'm in Indiana.
Another date?
Well, what's the date this Saturday, we're the tenth today?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, December twenty-first?
That I can make.
Is it next Saturday?
A week from Saturday.
On the Saturday, next Saturday.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I can give a workup.
What time?
Eleven o'clock. At least it won't be in its coldest. Hopefully it'll be sunny.
Yeah.
Hopefully it won't start getting dark by then.
Or raining.
Or snowing.
Yeah.
And this is a public site walk, so you folks are welcome to attend. It's gonna be posted as a, as a public meeting, with the planning board, a public site walk.
Saturday the fourteenth.
Saturday the twenty-first.
Oh, sorry, twenty-first.
At eleven AM is what we're looking at right now.
I can do Saturday the twenty-first at eleven. You wanna meet? I guess my question is, how far can we get in? 'Cause at this time of year, with the three inches of rain we're gonna get in the next three or four days?
Yeah, but we're talking about a week and a half, so, yeah.
I don't do.
I mean, it's wet, weather dependent, obviously.
Sorry, I don't do much.
Most important parts for you guys to see are where the road entrances are.
Yes, yes.
The rest of it is forested or field. The topography shows.
Hold on, so do we have an address near where we can set up, that I can put on the meeting notice?
That's what I'm referring to, would be a good spot. I don't wanna, uh, if it, we go over to Welsh, you have to see that area, I don't wanna block the area, you might say, for people coming in and out, um.
Corner of Emerald and Turkey Hill.
Corner of Emerald and Turkey Hill would be the best way to get in there, or at the bottom of the barway, where the barrier.
Without blocking people off, et cetera, okay.
So at the corner of Emerald, Emerald and Turkey Hill?
Yeah.
And then there's probably another room for like four or five cars.
There's no room for any cars on Emerald, but the best bet is corner of Turkey Hill and.
Maybe a large sheer around.
Yeah.
There's enough room, there's enough, uh.
Okay, so I'll put that down, the corner of Emerald and Turkey Hill.
Yeah, and then move over to Welch for a better look too.
Yeah, and then you could go over there.
You could reasonably, yeah, probably.
Six or eight cars in there, no problem.
Parking the police chief's parking lot, right? Is it his driveway?
No, it won't have any room, it's all blind corners.
All right.
Okay, I say, I think we have, uh, it's pretty much, you threw everything on this, so. I guess for those of you who have showed up, I thank you. You know, your, your input is, is valuable to us. And it, it's it, it's kind of one of these things where, you know, we, we have to make our decisions pretty much by the rules. You know, um, I know one of the things that, you know, has already been brought up, it was brought up by DPW was the condition of Emerald Road.
Yep, that's a concern.
Certain areas, and it would appear that one of the things that we're gonna be looking for is some sort of improvements.
And this was discussed at the pre-application meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely no problem.
Yep.
So.
Involved with, on Bigelow Road, we had to do the exact same thing.
And that's what we'll rely on Quinn Engineering.
Yeah.
For his recommendation.
In the DPW, yeah. It's more Chris's purview and the DPW's concerns.
Okay, thank you, people.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not bad, not bad.
She and her horses are right.
Next item, correspondence.
Yep, those are just the three emails I already read into the record, so.
That's why I wanted to get him in, so everybody had it.
That got taken a little bit out of order.
And town planner.
So, okay, so.
Meeting, schedule and deadlines.
Yep, so here you go, this is available on the website, this is just. Tamika? This is just the table of all the meeting dates for two thousand twenty-five, with the various deadlines for submission of materials, public hearing notices, et cetera, just so you guys have a copy. So anyone can look and see when things are due for a given meeting.
And this is posted?
Yes, it's on the website, put it up there a couple of days ago. So the next thing to be discussed is, let's see, I'll, let me go to.
See, so, one, two.
Oh, no, he's counting, why is he counting?
Yes.
What are you counting, Dick?
Three meetings I won't be at.
Okay, so, um.
If you're in Florida, enjoy it.
Thing, the next thing I would like to discuss is, um, setting a bylaw subcommittee meeting for January while we're here. Because we're gonna have things we're gonna need to start working on, so, and including opening up a public hearing for the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Um, to begin work on that, so that's a quick one that we can knock off right now is.
But, um, is our, is this, our meeting is on the seventh, correct? Or is it on the fourteenth?
No, fourteenth.
Why don't we do the eighth? Week before.
And, and we usually meet, what's, is that a seven PM or six thirty usually?
Usually six thirty, because I try to keep it to no more than hour, hour and a half, and that's it.
So is everyone available, uh, who's on that committee on, on the eighth?
Everybody's sitting here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Six thirty or so?
Six thirty.
It's a Wednesday?
Yeah, it's a Wednesday. Six thirty? I like to have a little later, because there's stuff comes up, I can't get back. Good.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Before we get to this, the, the discussion of the joint meeting that was being proposed with the select board, I just wanna do one more housekeeping item. We have a situation, again, we've talked about the, the, um, the store at two seventeen Barry Paxton Road down at the corner. Um, I have been working at the property owner to submit an application for site plan interview, haven't received it yet. Um, he was most recently in my office right before Thanksgiving, saying that he's working with a new engineer to do a site plan. But at this point, we've been trying to get an application.
Can't close the door.
I know.
Just tell him by.
So anyway, um, so this has been going on, we've been working on this, myself and the building commissioner, since August at this point. So the, so, so the question is.
John, I apologize, I didn't catch.
He needs to get site plan approval to do his store down at the corner of Barry Paxton Road.
House, that, thanks, Tamika, I was trying to, I would, I, I had the, I had the marijuana guy in my mind, and I'm going like, that's not it.
The building commissioner wants guidance from the board as far as whether or not we should set a deadline, a drop dead deadline to get this application in at this point.
I'm sorry, I gotta jump in here, we've sent many deadlines.
Yeah.
Yep. I, I, I'm, I'm out of patience with it, I sent an email a couple of months ago, maybe, maybe it was a month and a half ago. Um, I find it disingenuous that it's been months at this point, and they're still doing business on a potential brown site. Um, in which they were previously distributing consumables. And I know that they don't, I, I, I don't think they have that now, I think they're doing wreaths and Christmas decorations, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, at this point, we've put the liability on the town. Because we know, uh, what this site is, and we have basically, essentially capitulated to allow the business to continue. Uh, that's where I stand, that's my opinion.
The owner of the property?
What do you mean, where is he? Physically?
Pardon?
What, what do you, figuratively, where does he stand?
Why hasn't he ever showed up in front of us?
Because he's still trying to get a site plan put together. He was working with Julian as an engineer, but apparently was getting the runaround. So he recently contacted a new engineer to put a site plan together, that's his reasoning, so. Um, so that's why the building commissioner asked me to put this on a planning board agenda to get guidance from the planning board.
So I did, I went down there to talk to him, you know, they were packing up some of the stuff at the time, this is a while ago.
Steve, just to clarify, the owner of the property is not the person that runs house, houses.
I know, that's what I'm saying, he, he's renting, or she is renting the property from him.
Right.
And, uh.
So what is the pleasure of the board? As far as a deadline, or basically, is it at the point where the planning board would advise the building commissioner to issue a cease and desist until?
Next Friday, it's got until next Friday to get plans in, then a cease and desist.
That's the seventeen, or, uh, yeah, what, what's that date?
Um, that's.
A week from Friday or this Friday?
From this, no, not, that, th- this Friday's sort of ridiculous.
Thirteen, would be this Friday, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I would say the twentieth, to have until the twentieth to have documents in the building inspector's hands, or a cease and desist will be issued.
Put it after Christmas.
Might I make a suggestion? I know he had mentioned when he came in that they're essentially wrapping up their season right now. So I'm just wondering, do you set a stipulation so that they cannot open in the spring until the process is done?
That.
Cause it might not make too much of an impact, where they're probably closing in a couple of weeks anyways. Just a thought.
Well, then I could go to, I, I, I could be generous, which I don't think, to Britten's point, I'm to the point of generosity is getting to be old. You, you've pushed the town far enough.
This is not, this, this didn't just come up.
Oh, I know.
Been months.
Yeah.
And I understand the Christmas season, but like, it, it's not like they just opened up and they're trying to make, you know, a few dollars.
Yeah.
And we're shutting them down before Christmas, this has been ongoing for months.
Moving on of another facility.
Just come to us with, it's, it's.
It's not.
I apologize, it's not rocket.
It says it right in our bylaws.
Come to us with a plan, or at a minimum, a letter, or something with correspondence, or at a absolute minimum, sit in front of the board, come to these meetings and say, hey, guys, I'm working on it, I don't have the money right now, here's why, at least we can have a conversation. Now we're just, yeah, sure, you wanna kick that can? Fantastic.
Me, for God's sake, that's why I wanna see the owner, the owner is the one that's responsible, not house, but the owner. Owner owns that property, he's the one's responsible for these people being in there, so he should be in here first. I know that we need something from house, but I think that he being the doggone owner of that property, it's his liability.
Yeah, and he's running a higher risk because it's a high-traffic business, before, no one was really on his property, now, now.
Someone pulls out of there, gets T-boned.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Oh, the town of Rutland knew about it for four months, they continued to let business happen there.
You're saying safety too, not just the brown, brown.
Oh, it's all the above.
It's all the above, that's, that's a high, that's a high-traffic area, we have no traffic study, we have no business plan, we have nothing.
Yep.
I drop it upon the doggone owner.
I'm not trying, I, I understand I'm coming off as like, anti-business here, I'm just saying, I have to look at it from the town of Rutland is extremely exposed, because we've already sent written correspondence.
And all, also.
And we're still allowing it.
The question becomes, does he have a CO to be in there?
That I don't know.
Ain't safe being a Scrooge.
Jen?
I'm with you.
Jen?
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Price, I just, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this back up, uh, again, living down in that area, um, uh, Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive. Living down in that area and having to drive through that intersection daily, there's constantly, uh, again, not having psych conditions. They've got Christmas trees right out that are blocking line of sight for that intersection, and we know how bad it is. So anything that we can do to help, uh, put some conditions in place um, to make sure that it's safe and that people aren't, either your cars or anything that they're selling, flags, signs, whatever it may be, is not lock, blocking line of sight. Um, is, is very important.
And we can't, Jen, we can't do that until we get a site plan in front of us, that's.
Well, I know, but that's, that's why I'm saying, I, I appreciate you bringing this back around, because he shouldn't be allowed to operate without those conditions in place.
Then I'm, Jen, then I'm, I'm on board with, with Britten, you got Friday, cease and desist, I, I just.
Thank you.
I.
Cause it's not, and again, I, I do, I'm sensitive to it, I get it, I, I don't, I don't wanna be.
Put out a business guy.
Guy, man, I mean, but come on, it's been months, we've already corresponded, we've sent and written notices. We've asked them to come in, and all we get is the can kicked down the road.
Yeah.
My patience, I, I only speak for myself, but my patience is done with it.
Dick, I, I agree with you, um, that, giving a cease and desist to the person that's leasing it, I get it. But there should be some consequences for the, the owner too. I don't know, again, I'm not in the enforcement, so I don't know what that is.
I don't think legally, uh, uh, that's where you get into a little bit of a water, because you have to. Depending on the lease, the legal, the, the legal wording of the lease, for the company that's using the property, they may be responsible. If there's no lease in place, then the owner is ultimately responsible for any and all requirements.
I just think that the building inspector, I know, I know he's been down there, see, that's, that's the problem. And we're not getting anywhere, so maybe we should just suggest to him, listen, we've had multiple discussions, we've had individuals at our meeting that are asking for some, some relief, I think it's time to, to say game over. And I, I agree, Tamika, I hate being that Scrooge, give them until spring, but the problem is they've had four months to fix this.
No, 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 I totally agree with you, I, I think my point was more of, I don't think the cease and desist is gonna be a huge hit to them, cause I think they're wrapping up.
Yeah, they're wrapping up the Christmas.
I'd be more concerned that the whole winter goes by, and then they open in the spring and say, oh, yeah, yeah, we're working on it, we're working on it, you know?
But that, that could, yeah, to your point, that could still very well be what happens regardless.
With the cease and desist, they're basically shut down from any operations. Yeah, and, and I like, I like your point, sends the message, I think we, we just need to tell the building inspector, we still have anything before us. And, uh, again, I hate to use a, a catchphrase, but game over. You, you've had four months to do this, I mean.
This is not our first morning.
We've had site plans here for the planning board that have been drawn out with crayons. I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for a professional drawing, but an engineer drawing is great.
It's a lot, it's, it is a lot of money, it's a lot of investment to have a site plan drawn up. Especially if you're doing kind of what they're doing right now, which is you don't really know what that site plan's gonna be. I don't know if I'm gonna have Christmas trees here, maybe here, maybe I got, maybe I got food stand here, I don't know. I am completely sensitive to all of that, but you gotta get us something so we can have a conversation about the limitations. And at least look at traffic patterns at a minimum, parking, et cetera, I'm sorry, yeah. No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna add, some of the members may remember a couple of years ago when the cracked food truck was there.
Yeah, you could use that information.
I was just gonna say, because you guys set a lot of conditions about where people could park, where tables could be. I know you said that the pill, the public was not allowed to access the building.
There's a file.
Because of the building, and that thing's been changed in the building since then.
There's a file that Dave put together, I'm sure John's got it from that, that application from Cracked. So there's no reason that house or whoever the leasing couldn't come in and say, it's public information, look at it, use that for your tool to get to the end game. And that hasn't happened.
So it sounds like, is December twentieth a reasonable?
I, I say this Friday now, I've sort of changed my mind.
Well.
What is, let me, let me ask you this.
I would say a week from Friday is probably reasonable, because we're going into Wednesday already. But I agree with Tamika, where he shouldn't be allowed to reopen in the spring until he has, until he has this.
Well, the cease and desist, that you basically shut down until you.
Yes.
Adhere to the rules, so legitimately, to Tamika's point, they can't do anything after the twentieth.
Say the spring, he won't be allowed to reopen until he successfully comes before the planning board and gets a plan of approval.
Yeah.
And I can issue a letter tomorrow to the building commissioner.
So let's see, if we were with the EDC, how would that go with them?
Well, they should be down there promoting it.
Well, honestly, at this point, it's not really, it's, it's, they're not complying with our zoning bylaws, that's what, that's the big problem right now.
Well, I, I would say even to a further point, I mean, there's, we're opening up the liability for the town at this point. Because we've, we have notified them ad nauseam, uh, both in writing, phone calls that I've been aware of.
In-person meetings.
In-person, down, down to the site, and at this point, I gotta say, like, it's just a blatant disregard for, I'm not really gonna get that. I'm just gonna say, oh, it's coming, oh, it's coming, we're, we're four months plus into this.
Yeah.
And I understand, again, I'm not trying to be the Scrooge, but my patience on this is just, I'm sure you can tell, it's like, we've given them an opportunity again and again and again.
Right. And that's why this.
Thirteenth, they should have a cease and desist.
Understand this perception I keep hearing in the year plus that I've been here, that Rutland is so business unfriendly, I haven't seen that from my seat. What I've seen is entities taking advantage of the town. And now that we're actually trying to institute some kind of standards, that, I mean, this, this is not a big deal, to, to Britten's point. And to his point, this is not a big deal, this is basic things that every town I've worked in requires. So I don't know, I don't know where this rep, I.
Bring a crayon.
I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know where this, I don't understand this reputation, I, I haven't seen it in my, in my seat for over a year.
Again, this is my opinion, the reputation is more recent than old because of policies and procedures that started to get put in place. Because of, and I'm using a phrase, my phrase, not the board's, cowboy action that's happened in the past. And some of the rules have been put in place, like, you gotta follow the zoning rules, you gotta, you know, fill out a home occupancy, major or minors. Things like that have now sorted to.
There's been a lack of enforcement.
Yeah, well, it's, it's documenting too what's going on, so the town's protected, their butters are protected. And then actually, the person doing the.
Is protected.
Is protected, so it's, it's.
Yeah.
It just hasn't happened in the past, and again, it's growing pains, you'll hear that all the time in Rutland, it's growing pains.
Is the board in agreement that that's the way?
I'll make a motion that, um, we send a letter to the building inspector, and, and it can be modified that, uh, issue a cease and desist as of Friday, uh, uh, December thirteenth.
I would second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
I think I drove down there recently, it's got a for sale sign out there.
No, that's been up there, that's, yeah, that's.
Is that real or fake?
Yeah, no, that's real, no, no, but that has nothing to do with this business, has nothing to do with this business, so.
Yeah, I'm just curious if.
Yep. On the discussion side, I would ask, what is the, um, I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but.
Nope, nope, I think, uh.
Keith, they've had a, they've had a, they, since Tamika's point, since Cracked was there, that's for sale sign's been up.
So it's not.
Yeah.
No, it's not new.
Relevant or advertised.
It's since the guy had the auto business, auto repair business there, which is going back six or seven years.
Um, I guess the only thing to give him a nice list, everything he's.
No, I, I've already done that, Keith, I've met with him multiple times, I gave him a checklist, I even wrote out what waivers he should be requesting and the language he should use for the reasons he's requesting it, I've handed that to him. So, I've, 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 I've spoon fed him information, everything he needs.
Denial, just tell him, hey, by the way, you, you, you got, here's your list, you're not.
I've, I've already done it, yeah, I've already.
Say, I don't want to play anybody out of business. Well, that's what I'm, trying to find out.
My question was, is our, our letter to the building department, um, what is, what's your thoughts on the wording for that?
I'll, I'll put it together, I'll put it together tomorrow morning.
And then obviously, I would assume it'd just go to Norm, Norm can approve.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to him, yeah.
And then, cause I don't think you need to send it out, well, I don't know, I don't want him to speak to everybody.
So Norm, if I send it to you tomorrow morning, can you take a look at it pretty much as soon as you? So, Norm, if I send it to you tomorrow morning, can you take a look at it pretty much as soon as you're free to do so, so I can get it? I, I'd like to get it issued tomorrow, if we're, if we're setting Friday as a deadline, needs to be to the building department tomorrow, cause I don't believe.
That's twenty-four hours, that's.
Well, I don't believe, here's the other thing, I don't believe he's in on Thursday and Friday, he comes in Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, correct? So, he's not in on Thursday and Friday, so should. So, so should we set the deadline for next week to give him time to potentially process that?
I can, I can modify it to Monday, the.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Okay.
Modify my.
Thank you.
Motion.
So, mo, so agreed?
Just agree with the second.
Second. Second to the agreement of the.
Is there any further discussion?
The only thing, Norm, I would say is, and this doesn't go in the letter, but John, I, I would probably mention the building inspector who delivers that. Mention to him that there is, and I know this will be the fourth or fifth time, but there is documentation.
Yeah, I will.
From cracked that he could use for his site plan review, all that stuff.
I gave him a copy of the draft site plan that was presented for the motorcycle place that never went forward. I made of, he has, I've given him everything he needs, so.
I was trying to do everything.
And I could put that, I can mention that in the letter, I've given him every documentation.
All right, good enough.
Anything further?
Uh, just real quick, it's not totally relevant, it's gonna not necessarily be addressed to Howes business, it's addressed to.
Yeah, I will, I will get, I did get that information, yeah.
No, it's gotta be the Howes.
He's the applicant, it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be addressed to both, the business owner and him.
Yeah.
So, they know both of them. That's it.
That's it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lastly.
Lastly.
The board wouldn't, wanted to, um, discuss the rec, we should request, uh, from the select board. To hold a joint meeting on January sixth regarding zoning bylaw amendment procedure, so I will open that up for discussion.
To the chair, I say nope, there's a procedure we've had, it's been explained at town meeting, it's been explained before. I don't see why we need to discuss it any further, that's my opinion. If, if the board agrees that it needs to, I'm fine with that, but I just believe that. I know I've personally explained it multiple times on how we do bylaws. And the subcommittee's been around for well before, or, you know, with, we did a major bylaw with marijuana. We've done other bylaw amendments, we work with two planners, I just don't see why we need to discuss something that's already in place. It's my opinion.
I guess my question would be like, what is, I guess, I know that there, um, there was an email sent out that said, you know, just to discuss the process. Um, I was just curious as to, uh, what was sort of the reason for that, was there? Other than the Article ten, is there a specific lapse in process that's happened?
Jen, here's your hand up, so she may be able to answer your question.
Of course.
Okay, Jen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I, the, the email originated for me and I, I think it was more personally. For me to acknowledge a lack of knowledge on, again, speaking for myself, my part. Um, on that, what that process is, and I had, um, reached out to see if there was any documentation. Where I could read up on what that was and was told that there wasn't anything. So, the goal of what I was suggesting was not to necessarily change anything about the process. But just to have that discussion between the two boards to make sure that everybody was aware of what that process was. Because I am fully admitting that I was not aware of it. And to have something put down on paper that we could reference moving forward for not just the current boards. But for any new seated boards, uh, any new members that come in, in the future.
Jen, Mass General Law defines what zoning bylaws and how they're executed in the state of Massachusetts, so we can't change that.
But I think, I think Tim, to Jen's point, it's not necessarily that ten thousand square foot regulation. I think it's every town does things a little bit differently, and in this case, but hear me out. This is the first time I've worked in a community that has a, a zoning bylaw subcommittee, as a subcommittee of the planning board. I think that's the thing is, what is the local procedure, how have things been done locally in terms of, for, like I said. Um, even with this accessory dwelling unit bylaw and how to deal with that. We discussed it and we're gonna be opening up a public hearing with the bylaw subcommittee. Holding, continuing that public hearing until it's ready to go to a public hearing for town meeting, then we're gonna close that public hearing and open up a public hearing with the planning board. That process is unique to Rutland.
It's unique to the planning board, not to Rutland, it's unique to the planning board.
Right.
Our purview.
Right.
I don't play in other people's sandboxes, I don't wanna play in mine.
Right, but I think what she's saying is there's no documentation of that.
Yeah, Tim, if there had been, and when, when we had that discussion to place the Article ten on the warrant. If I had known what that was, I might have questioned more on, has the planning board reviewed it and has it gone through that process? So, that's really more of what I am looking to make sure that we're on the same page about and we have something that we can reference on what. The right steps are that you, as the planning board, would like to have when it comes to any of those zoning, zoning bylaw amendments.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm repeating myself, but anything with zoning bylaw, the, the, the bylaw subcommittee isn't even a discussion point. That's internal to the planning board, zoning bylaws have to come to the planning board per M G L, so that's not a policy that we would put together.
Right, but.
Board can recommend a zoning bylaw.
Right, hold on, hold, yeah, there's a difference, because the planning board by law has to hold a public hearing on all, all zoning bylaw amendments. Whether it's citizen petition, petition or otherwise, that is the requirement, however. There is not a requirement in terms of who sponsors planning board articles, they could come from the town planner, they could come from the planning board. I've seen instances where the fire department in Rentham, uh, sponsored a zoning bylaw amendment, cause he wanted regulations put in place for. Roof mounted solar to make it safer for the fire department.
That's, John, that's fine, but ultimately, you, the, anybody can sponsor it, but that has to be sent to the planning board.
Correct.
And that is an M G L law, it's not something that we come up with a policy or tell anybody how to do.
Right.
So, I, I agree that maybe we need to do some education on, on zoning, on how zoning bylaws are handled.
I think there needs to be something in writing that I could work on if the board gives me their blessing to kind of memorialize that.
Okay.
I think the challenge is that the board members aren't always gonna be the same, and so if somebody comes onto the planning board that's new, or someone comes onto the select board. Or even staff in our offices, if they're not familiar with it and they have nothing to reference, but, you know, the, the depths of M G L. I think it leaves us open for errors.
I don't, but see, I don't wanna be writing policies and procedures that if M G L or something changed, we gotta go back and fixers. We gotta be responsible for fixing that, M G L's the land of the law, end of discussion.
But M, M G L picks up at the public hearing.
It doesn't, it, it picks up as the zoning bylaws are responsibility of the planning board. Not just the, not just the public hearing, which you're correct, but the zoning bylaw is the, the sole responsibility of the planning board.
In terms, in terms of what, what do you mean, that's a very general statement as far as what about the zoning bylaws is the, is the co- complete purview of the planning board?
The, this, the, the ConCon can't, uh, put a zoning bylaw before the town, can't do it. It has to come through the planning board.
They could sponsor it, the planning board just has to hold a public hearing on it, so I'm, I'm gonna need to check on that.
You, we need to get a lawyer involved in this from, uh, K P then and have them define us how Mass General Law is defined, cause that's not how I read it. What's that?
Right, citizen's petition.
Petition though.
If, sorry, it's Leah, I have a question, or if, when I have a chance, I've had my hand up for a little while.
Yeah, I know.
Um, it's Leah Whitman, two oh eight East County Road and also, uh, select board, but I'm speaking just from my own personal. Um, clarification is, to me, this came from the Article ten discussion. And, um, or situation which was based off of a citizen's petition for zoning bylaw change. And I think we've been seeing more and more and more citizens petitions coming in, um, that are addressing zoning. Zoning changes, and I think it was alerted K P, it was under K P's recommendation. Um, to have a town sponsored article that provided a little bit more control and vetting and everything. So, my understanding was the notice was through K P basically saying. This citizen's petition could also go this way and that that's how it was, so I wanted to have a conversation, I was hoping to have a conversation. If what we can do as a town to either, um, address citizens. Wants for zoning changes before it gets to a citizen's petition, or how we can address citizens petitions. That are zoning bylaws to make sure that the, the public hearing times are met appropriately. And that legally does, planning board not want any input from select board, legal, any other entity. When it comes to a citizen's petition, you know, kind of that piece for, um. As far as like the policy procedure piece of, of the citizens petitions is where I was coming at it from.
I'm gonna say that, I, I'm getting more frustrated with the point, legally, anything with, with zoning, anybody can put together. Like you said, John, but just, yeah, I don't wanna get into it, it, let's leave it alone. Cause I, I don't believe the process was solved, cause Article ten had nothing to do with the planning board, okay, let's just be point blank about it. The planning board's responsibility was Article eleven of handling that citizen's petition from that zone. From that zoning, citizen's petition, we were supposed to have a public hearing and then move forward. Article ten, we had no input until last, now we, we worked to get it fixed, and I appreciate all the board and the bylaw subcommittee working on that. We did a good job, but the point is, is that that should have been run through the correct process, which is. If there's gonna be a zoning change, anybody can sponsor it, but needs to come to the planning board and then be addressed there. And then we would send it to legal to have it checked from our, from our standpoint and also hold a public hearing.
I guess, if, sorry, if I may, and this is why I think we wanted to have a, a meeting, um, because I, I, I. Don't, I'm not speaking for the entire board, I'm speaking for myself, um, I wanna, I wanna understand the process because I was under the. How does, how does the planning board wanna be notified, first of all, because I was under the impression that staff and chairs and everything. Were notified of legal's suggestion of this, so apart from that, as far as a formal process. But then also, I don't believe there was a public hearing held for Article eleven, which was a citizen's petition, which led to there not being any. There not being an option to take any action on Article eleven, and so there was a breakdown. To me, there were a few different breakdowns and I just want to try to clarify and not be finger pointing or anything. I wanna make sure that from a process point, that we, as we have seen over the past couple of years, we're getting a lot more. Citizens petitions that are zoning bylaws, and if there's an opportunity to have it be a. A tweak that then becomes town sponsored versus a strict citizen's petition that is actually better for the town. As an entirety versus the entity that is putting forth the plan, how can that process look? Given the timelines that, that we have, and, and does that mean that you want a handwritten letter from the select board? Or is the fact that staff and chairs are involved, is that, like, how does that process need to look?
Leah, in my opinion, I, I always, everywhere, anywhere I've worked have gotten written communication. Whenever the select board has referred an article to the planning board for a public hearing, I'm used to getting a memo for the file saying. The select board voted at their meeting on such and such a date to refer the following bylaw amendments or the following articles. To the planning board for public hearings, so that's something that I'm used to, I'm used to getting a written memo, um, memorializing that and saying that. Memorializing that vote of the select board and the action to refer it to the planning board for a public hearing. So, in terms of my, my perspective, I'd love to see something in writing.
That's fine, let's have a talk. January, I don't see.
January sixth.
January sixth, that's that Monday?
Yes.
Britain, what Mondays always stink for me, that's always my, uh, weekend night.
By far the worst, but.
Yeah, let me see on my schedule. Let me see, let me see the weekend. Right now, I'm clear, at night. I can do January sixth.
Now, is this something that's important for the board to be present in person, you think?
I want to be, I, 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 I'm not a, I'm not a.
Virtual.
I'm not a virtual dude.
I'm not a zoomer.
Yeah.
I, I, I need to see reactions and be able to understand, so.
What, what time would, I assume.
It's gotta be after five, yes, yeah, six or six thirty, he'll give me time.
So, Leah, this is not, this is on, not on a normal select board meeting night, is that correct?
Sorry, I couldn't get my phone to unmute, um, I believe, I believe January sixth is a normal meeting night for select board, is that correct, Tamika?
That is correct.
Okay, so would this be at the beginning of the agenda, so we have some certainty as far as time?
I mean, I think I would be amenable to what works best for the majority of the, the planning board if, you know, our meetings typically start at six. So, probably we would start, I would say maybe, you know, six, between six and six fifteen, if you wanted to do it at the start. But I know your pla, your planning board meetings usually start at six thirty and if that's a little bit more amenable, I'm. Amenable, I would be amenable to kind of placing it to what works most, being it for your members, since you're the ones that are coming to an off night meeting.
Mondays suck for me, but I'll make it work.
Yeah, I can do six thirty, I can definitely, six thirty, I can get here. Presuming we have no snowstorm and, uh.
Does that work, Leah, six thirty?
Does it have to be, is it, can it be a business or does it have to be public?
So, it has to be public, so even a business meeting would be a public meeting?
Yes, they're all public, yeah.
Yeah, the, the challenge is, and I'm sure it's, it's the same for the select board as it is for the planning board, is trying to schedule things on off nights.
Sure.
Um, so that's why we tried to schedule it during a regularly scheduled meeting in the hopes, and that's why we extended the invitation to you guys to see if that worked for you. If it didn't, obviously, we, there'd be a little bit more back.
Cause it's already public notice, everybody knows the schedule.
Well, I'm gonna post a meeting on behalf of the planning board at that time too.
Yeah.
So, it's, so everyone's aware.
Uh, yeah, I can make, I can make six-ish work, yeah.
Six thirty, Tim?
I, anything between six, six thirty, I just can't make it before six.
Okay, so Leah, just no earlier than six is what I'm hearing here.
So, we could, we will, we start our meetings, we start our meetings at six and usually do, you know, like the treasury warrant payroll, that kind of stuff. Immediately right after and then, um, can, and we usually would do public comment at the start also and then can go right in. Or, you know, if the majority of the members are present at, you know, closer to six, then we can do it, I, I won't rush it if I know that you have a member. Or two coming, you know?
I'll, I'll get a sense closer to the meeting, Leah, I'll try and get a sense of, uh, which planning board members are gonna be there, if we're gonna have a full board there, so. So, I'll try and, I'll try and let you know that ahead of time.
Okay, and we'll keep it towards, you know, the, the beginning of the meeting.
That'd be great.
Just to be respectful of you guys and hopefully it won't be a forever long conversation and we can do some of the, the digging and. M G L research and everything in advance to.
Yeah, I wanna look at the M G L too, because I'm, I'm not, I, I don't know it word for word, so I wanna look into what Tim's saying to see exactly what. What the role of the planning board is when it comes to zoning bylaw amendments.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate the planning board's willingness to, to have the conversation, like I said, I don't want it to be, I'm not looking at finger pointing or anything, but. I think that there's different things that have been coming up more recently and so how, to make sure that we're.
Yeah.
We have some documented process when boards change over and when staff changes over and everything, and knowing that policy is policy. And really, policy should be re- reviewed every couple of years anyway, um, but we, we at least have a procedure or something. So, this doesn't happen again.
Leah, to, to your point for that, uh, January sixth meeting, does it make sense, John and Norm, just to. Again, I'm, I'm an outline guy, I don't need stuff written out, but for this discussion to have an outline of what our typical procedure for a bylaw.
Could do that, that's not.
Just to, just so the select board can have something in front of them, so we got talking points.
Yeah, so I mean, Norm and I normally meet at least once a week, so even though we don't have a meeting till the fourteenth because of this. If, Norm, you wanna sit down early next week and, and put something down.
Me, I'm just talking bullet items, I just wanna make sure that the select board can understand what we've been doing for the last. Four or five years, six years, seven years, I, and this goes back a while for, um, our, our bylaw subcommittee. Cause I specifically, I reference this all the time, we had something, I think it was, somebody wanted a police review. Of, of, of solicitors in town. And they brought it before the town and it just, you know, wasn't well written and we suggested you could turn that into a bylaw. And bring it before the planning board and we could take it to the subcommittee, so we gave a procedure to that individual at town meeting of what to do. and bring it before the planning board and we could take it to the subcommittee, so we gave a procedure to that individual at town meeting of what to do. So, I mean, this would be a good time maybe just to get that out on a bullet point, get it to select board so they can see it.
The other thing we need to talk about, I think that's important, is the, is the timeline of having, um, town council reviewers owning by law amendment. Um, because we don't need duplication. I know, uh, Tamika, correct me if I'm wrong, but whenever a, a warrant's put together, town council reviews the whole thing. So they review every article automatically, you know, so do, we don't wanna be duplicating efforts with town council for nothing, so I think there's, it's important to coordinate that as far as when that happens.
Yeah, I'm still, I still like having, go ahead, Norm, I know you're thinking I could read you.
I, I think in many, many cases, more than one legal review is necessary.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. And, and, and I mean, in this case, you know, the citizen's petition, I mean, we, everyone was kind of left scrambling because citizen's petitions don't have to come in at a certain time. They can come in at the last minute and legally they have to go on the warrant, so that's, citizen's petitions are a little bit different. Because with other bylaws that we're gonna be working on, we've, we're gonna be working on them for months and we have some control over that process. The other thing we could look at is, so Leah, you, Leah and Jen asked about public hearings. My practice has always been to hold a planning board public hearing on zoning by law amendments to planning board meetings before town meeting, because that gives a chance for an article to be worked on, have proper review, and as close, as close to town meeting as possible, but having another meeting if there's a continuation. Now, we could certainly consider having public hearings earlier, but at the same time, we kind of go by when the, when the warrant opens and closes and things like that, so there's that to, to consider as well.
This one really is, this town meeting and this Article ten eleven really wasn't our best show of how we execute as a town.
Yeah.
We just, it didn't, to me, it didn't go well.
There, there, there was, to Leah's point, there was, I, I share part of the blame with that. When I had a meeting with, um, town council the day before, we were supposed to have the public hearing on Article eleven, and I should have gotten some, I should have left that conversation one hundred percent clear on what they were telling me as far as that public hearing the next night, so I, uh, that's, that's on me. I wish I could go back and do that over again.
I think this, what, what this whole process should be is a learning point for what not to do the next time. That's all it should be.
Yeah, so.
And that's it, just leave it, leave it at that.
Okay, is there anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, no. I was asked to.
Yes. Yep, I need, I need what Dick's request is for Britnol.
Cost, uh, copies of the conditions from the, uh, Britnol subdivisions, you know, um, I wa- I wanted the conditions.
Conditions of approval from the original decision?
That is correct.
Okay.
Not only because Tim, Norm and I know them, but I want these other two gentlemen to know them also. So I'd like to get them, um, pulled out and so we can.
Cause I think, I, I think Britten, when you first got on the board before.
I asked for anything that was approved that was in conversation. I do have a copy of that, yes. But, but.
I will look that, I will look that up.
By all means, if you send me another digital. Take the refresher course, cause we haven't touched any of that.
Yeah, no problem.
Well, I tell, I tell you, that's one of the reasons why I keep staying in business, because I feel that, um, Noble Hill.
Noble Hill's gonna be a huge refresher course.
Exactly, and, and, uh, I don't wanna la- last minute and all of a sudden Blair gets over there and starts to work and that's it.
Dick, if it wasn't for that, that entrance being closed, I'd, I would have pushed for a rescission because I think it's been on the books for fifteen years plus. Since twenty oh eight or twenty oh nine, somewhere like that.
Wait a sec, I gotta check out if, if they haven't made any progress on that.
They have, it's already been, we've already gone down that path.
Okay, so, so they have made, so, all right.
Unfortunately, yes. DCR wa- was around at the time.
We brought them out to take a look and get it to. And then the, um, what was I gonna say? Um, all, all I wanted to add is, is this is for the board, for the bylaw subcommittee, and if anybody, has Glenn gotten in touch with us? Cause I wanna know, are we, are we gonna put that in a holding pattern? That whole zone over there, or what, what's the?
Right now, I think we have, I think we have other fish to fry right now.
Oh, I do, but I, I just, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get our sites off of it.
Yeah, I don't want him upset, you know, cause we haven't communicated with.
Cause that was one of the three, three items that we promised the town two years ago, and it's, we got two of the three covered, but this third one hasn't been covered yet. Of, of finding a place to have a zone that would give small business, uh, access to places to store or use. I just didn't know if Glenn had done any communication or anything.
I haven't heard from him since those, uh, failed attempts at a site visit because of weather and COVID and things like that.
All right, I just was curious. We'll just stick to the two that we'll get to and leave that as a discussion point if it comes up. Okay, thanks.
I apologize, I do not wanna extend the meeting, but I just, I had something pop in my mind, um, in regards to previous things discussed. A, and not related directly to things we heard today, but as a separate matter, there is no requirement for a planning board to approve a plan for a town accepted subdivision for the road. There is no legal requirement, there is no precedent set. It is not a requirement of the planning board to accept such a plan. Um, I, I've, I've been through many approvals, many municipalities that will never hold up, so.
As far as roadway acceptance?
As far as roadway acceptance, yep. So a plan can ultimately be, uh, submitted.
The plan needs to be approved, but the roadway doesn't have to be accepted.
Exactly.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
So.
And each.
And just a point.
And, and by the way.
Wanted to throw out there.
Each project that comes before the planning board is different. There is no such thing as precedent setting, cause each lot is different, each project is different, the circumstances, the location are different, different factors.
Yes, most definitely. All right, I guess I might go motion.
Sorry.
To, uh, close the planning board meeting. Second that.
All right, I'll motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right, we're off.